They just may be waiting for you to call the order then, Brian.
Okay, so, uh, thank you, Mr. and I will call, um, this meeting of August eighteenth, uh, regular, uh, session to order. Um, this meeting is being held remote, um, uh, through the Zoom platform due to COVID nineteen closure. We have just come out, I'll go over our agenda, we've just come out of executive session, we were an executive session for the purpose of discussion. Strategy in relationship to collective bargaining of units A to D, or to do so in open session may prove detrimental to bargaining. We, uh, will have public comment, we have report discussion items, the district pre-K twelve curriculum updates, return to school update. We have four action items, a vote to approve mass DOT plans around VO, uh, vote capital planning priority list, a vote. For the disposal of surplus property and approval of minutes from July seventh and twenty first. You have chair report and superintendent reports, future agenda items, and our next meeting dates. With that, I would like to, uh, move into public comment, but before we begin public comment, as I always like to say. Like to remind everyone that public comment is a chance for members of the public to express their opinions on matters under the jurisdiction of the school committee. It's not a dialogue and the committee is under no obligation to respond to comments. Want to tight timeline as always tonight, and I'm going to limit public comments to twenty minutes, so we have time for discussion. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person, but the briefer and more succinct you can be, the more individual we can hear from. Public comment can be given by raising your digital hand, we will then elevate you to speak. Before however we begin, I would like to start by lowering all hands so that everyone has a fair opportunity to speak. So with that, I'm going to lower all hands and then ask people to raise their hands, and we will call them in the order at which they raised their hands. And give me a moment, uh, I'm going to welcome, uh. I don't know how to pronounce your name, Rosin O'Brien, um, you've been elevated. If you could state your name and address for the committee and, uh, you have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Roisin O'Brien, I am a teacher at Winchester High School, I teach in the English department.
Thank you, my apologies for messing up your first name.
Uh, it's in the Irish language, no worries. As I watched the school committee meeting on Thursday, August sixth, less than two weeks ago, one detail stood out to me as it does tonight. Instead of meeting in person, you and your colleagues chose to conduct your meeting digitally. Despite the fact that our state has relatively no low numbers of COVID nineteen, I'm assuming that you still greatly value. Your own health and the health of your colleagues, your children and your elderly parents. And choose to err on the side of caution rather than risk exposure to this highly contagious disease. Why then are you willing to gamble with teachers and students' health and the health of our own families by instituting in-person learning? During that same meeting, Dr. Evans seemed to predict that remote learning will become inevitable at some point during the first semester. What will prompt this shift in our teaching and learning model from hybrid to remote? It seems to me that the only obvious answer is illness in our school community. With this in mind, don't teachers and students ostensibly become guinea pigs in an experiment? Will we be caught in a constant waiting game to learn which one of us contracts the disease first and how many of us, how many others we infect? Won't greater scheduling problems be posed by our need to self-quarantine for fourteen days? Every time we feed, we've been exposed, we must consider the fact that a constant shift in models will be accompanied by setbacks. We will be in a constant state of flux, one step forward, two steps back. As we manage a new learning curve disrupting any sustained momentum we've acquired. When we do ultimately move to remote learning model as the national trend of already open schools suggests. We still require teachers to physically come into our buildings to conduct digital learning teaching. If so, I ask you, what makes teachers any less likely to contract COVID nineteen from each other than we are to contract it from our students? Doesn't requiring us to teach from our physical school buildings continue to send the message that teachers' lives are not valuable? Nor are we to be trusted as professionals, this mandate seems to suggest that when we're not being watched, we fail to do our jobs. Please respect that our long record as a high performing district proves otherwise. Strangely enough, as I continue to work on the curriculum for the new women's studies course. I cannot help but draw obvious parallels between the position I'm placed in with your decision to return to school. And the no-win dilemma of working mothers throughout history. My home district will institute remote learning this fall, Winchester will not. My daughter is six years old and entering first grade, not the age of a child who can set her own daily academic agenda. Where am I as a female teacher and mother expected to place my priorities on my biological child by taking a leave of absence or on my career? In addition to this conundrum, I am also the daughter of a ninety-four-year-old World War Two veteran, living in a brand-new senior facility nearby. How can I feel confident each time I visit that I'm not inadvertently exposing him and his fellow residents to this easily transferable disease? Finally, as the late John Lewis once said, when you see something that is not right, not fair, not just, you have to speak up. You have to say something, you have to do something. Sending teachers and students back to face-to-face learning this fall is not right, not fair, and not just. I implore you to reconsider your plan, I've happily given twenty-one years of service to the Winchester Public Schools. All I'm asking right now is that you respect my desire to remain in good health as strongly as you do your own. It's time to take this disease seriously, we are in the midst of an unprecedented worldwide pandemic. And to pretend otherwise is imprudent, we must recognize the whole weight of the pandemic severity. And put our own wants aside in favor of our actual needs. We all want academic and social engagement to return to normal, but for now, we really only need students' minds to be engaged together. This should be done remotely as we wait for a vaccine, thank you for listening to my comments.
Thank you very much for coming and speaking, um, I, I don't, um, almost never respond to public comment, but I would like. Point out that something I'll be mentioning later on in our meeting is that we plan to hold our next meeting, uh, in person, however, we will not be able to take public comment. At that meeting in person, we have a hundred and eighty-six attendees at this meeting and we had over five hundred attendees at the last meeting. Those are not meetings that are well-held in, um, person right now, nor will we be asking our teachers or students to return to, uh, a, a single room with five hundred people at the same time. But I just wanted to make that point and I will be, uh, uh, speaking about that as we talk about future agenda items in our next meeting dates. Uh, with that, I would like to elevate Kenny Tully, Mr. Tully, if you state your name and address for the committee, uh, and you have three minutes.
Mr. Chairperson and former student, can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you very well, Mr. Tully.
My name is Kenny Tully and I'm a lifelong resident of Winchester, as well as an eighth-grade history teacher at McCall. Um, my mother was an art teacher in town, uh, I've been, uh, teaching for forty-six years and my daughter now is a, uh, fellow teacher at Ambrose Elementary School. For the past forty-six years, I've dedicated myself to being a teacher. I've run the McCall after-school intermurals program, my family and I have run the on-track program through the recreation department every spring. Culminating in the town championship track meet, uh, I've coached boys' winter track the last eight years. I've coached girls' softball and baseball, back in the seventies, I coached football. And as you know, for the past eight years, I've also coordinated the eighth-grade trip to Washington DC. I bring these things up because being a teacher and a coach in this town is what I love to do. And it's what I've dedicated my life to doing. During my time in town, I worked and I received in return a paycheck and benefits. And one of those was fifteen sick days every year, because I don't take many days, I now have a bank of five hundred and ninety sick days. That's more than three years, and that's one of the benefits that I earned. So needless to say, I was shocked when I was told that at seventy years of age, with underlying health condition. A note from my doctor saying I needed to use my sick days, I was told that I could not access my sick days. Instead, I was really told my only option would be to teach remotely. And that if I did, I'd be assigned to work with students who would be taking eighth, seventh-grade geography, which I've never taught. And eighth-grade history, US history, which I have taught. But if I'm at home, I wouldn't have access to the curriculum materials in school, there is no seventh-grade textbook. I have no experience with the content and I would know, have no peers to help me navigate the virtual teaching experience. As I tried to both teach the content to myself as well as any students assigned to my classroom. Needless to say, it was very disheartening to hear that this was really my only option. Unless, of course, I wanted to risk my life by entering the building at my age. If I didn't, I really only had the option of retiring from the job that I love. After forty-six years of giving my all to a community that, as I said, my family is so entrenched in, I love. It's so sad to think that I may be forced to walk away, not because I want to, not because I haven't earned the sick time. But because it's the only option I've been given. I love my job, the other teachers in town, we love our job, but some of us can't return. I'm asking the school committee, please consider allowing people like me to use the time that we've earned. Rather than forcing us to leave our profession, the profession and the community that we love. Thank you for your time and you've done pretty well for yourself, Brian.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tully, uh, I will, uh, disable you. And now I'd like to allow to talk Jess Penny, Ms., if you could state your name and address for the committee. Ms. Penny, we, I do not hear you at the moment. Can I ask the committee if anyone here is.
I do not hear her.
No, she was on mute and now she's not, so she just may have a microphone hardware problem, she's not on mute right now, I cannot hear her.
Okay.
Brian, can you, can Karen chat with her and see if she is available?
That would be great, Ms. Bollniers, if you can, uh, do that, that, um, Ms. Penny is the last person with a hand raised at the moment. So I'd like to give her a moment to be able to, um, try to adjust her audio.
Yep, there are two other hands raised.
So Ms. Penny, I'm, I'm going to, um, get back to you in a moment, uh, if you're able to connect with us. But in the meantime, I'm going to, um, disable talking from you. Work and I'm going to elevate to speak Dave, Dave, if you would state your name and address for the committee.
Hey, Brian. Dave Beauchamp, Richardson Street, how's it going?
Doing well, thank you, Mr. Beauchamp.
Hey, uh, thanks for everything you've done, uh, you conducted yourself fantastic, I mean, we all appreciate it. Uh, I have nothing to say except I'm going to shout out to Mr. Tully, uh, this is the best teacher you've had in this town and, uh. I mean, that guy's unhappy, you guys need to look yourselves in the mirror and do what's right, you guys are failing on a massive level. Um, and that's all I got to say, good luck to all of you, bye.
Thank you, Mr. Beauchamp, I'm going to disable talking, um, and I will come back to Jess Penny at the end. But first, I'm going to allow to talk, um, Jennifer Inferna, if you would state your name and address for the committee.
Sure, it's Jennifer Inferna at Four Lantern Lane.
Thank you, we hear you well.
Yep, and I, I sent a note, um, last night to the school committee members, um, basically just, um, interested in hearing the superintendent's, uh, comments today. Hopefully there'll be a response to the, the governor and Desi's new metrics that they put out, uh, last Tuesday specifically. Stating that schools are expected to abide by new metrics put out by the state. That color code towns based on COVID positivity in those towns. So Winchester has been color-coded as white, um, and has been so for more than ten consecutive weeks. With less than five COVID cases per week since June first. So I'm interested in hearing now that there are new metrics in which the governor and the state and the Department of Education has stated that schools are expected. To return to school in person, um, unless there's extenuating circumstances, they can go hybrid if they are color-coded as a white town. I'm interested in hearing today, the superintendent's next steps to abide by the new guidance put forth by the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Inferna, I'm going to, uh, lower your hand and I'm going to, uh, elevate again, uh. I'm trying to elevate Ms. Penny, um, if you can hear us, if you could state your name and address for the committee, we'll see if we can get this to work. We do not, still do not hear you.
Should we, um, promote to panelist to?
I'm willing to give that a try, um, and, uh, let me give that a try, uh. Ms. Penny, you've been promoted to a panelist, um. Still do not hear you, there are two more hands, so I'm going to, um, change your role back to attendee, um. Ms. Bollniers, how long have we been going, about fifteen minutes, would you say?
Um, eleven, eleven minutes.
So we, so I'm going to, uh, elevate, um, Ms. Katie Hillstrom, uh, if you could state your name and address for the committee, please.
Hi, my name is Katie Hillstrom and I am actually, uh, an English teacher at the high school, I have been working there since two thousand and four. Um, I just have two points I would like to make, the first is that, um. Listening to the previous comment about the state's new color coding and that Winchester has been white since June. Um, what people are not thinking about is that you have teachers coming in from towns all over the Commonwealth. Some even, uh, possibly from New Hampshire and other states. So you are, by asking teachers to come into the building, they may be bringing. COVID in from other places that are at higher risk. Um, and then my second point is I have knowledge, um, of the fact that some of our high schoolers. Have still been partying and not just partying outside, but having parties in homes or garages and closed spaces. And, uh, some of those parties with adults who know they're going on. Uh, so we are being asked to come into the building at least, uh, in this hybrid model and possibly even if remote to still have to come in physically and. Uh, meanwhile, we have these young people who we know can be carriers asymptomatic, who are not taking precautions. So I just wanted to make those two points, um, on behalf of your teachers in the district, thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, and I think that we have time for two more. Um, go a little over twenty minutes, but there are two more raised hands, I'd like to allow both of them, so we will be taking Ms. Hoffman and Ms. DeLeo. And then we will move on to, uh, the next agenda item, so I'm elevating Erica Hoffman, Ms. Hoffman, if you could state your name and address for the committee.
Hi, Brian, it's actually, uh, Jason Hoffman.
Thank you, thank you for, uh, coming, state your name and address for the committee and then, uh, uh, we hear you loud and clear.
Sure, Brian, it's Jason Hoffman, Seven Fairlane Terrace, and I'm just going to make this short, don't have anything prepared, I kind of, shoot from the hip here. Um, I, I just wanted to send out a, a quick, uh, kind of note to all the teachers that are listening, uh, right now, um. Especially, you know, there's been a lot of talk about the union, um, and the union's, uh, demands and their, um. And negotiations, I know that everyone kind of keeps negotiations close to the vest, uh, I'm a union member myself, I'm an essential worker, have been a union member for over twenty years. And just a, a quick message that if, uh, you feel that the union is not representing you properly. Um, and if you think demands are not reasonable, uh, speak up, you are protected. Uh, I have done the same in my career, uh, I've been involved in negotiations myself. And when I don't think something is right, I, I speak up and, uh, you are protected for that. So I listen to your heart and, uh, speak up if you need to, so that's all I need to say, Brian, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hoffman, uh, I'm going to disable talking and I'm going to take the last speaker, which will be, um. Susan DeLeo, Ms. DeLeo, if you could state your name and address for the committee.
Hi, it's Susan DeLeo, twenty-four Tap Drive, um, I just wanted to make a comment about the concerns that people keep speaking to. Of teachers coming in from other towns, possibly with higher COVID rates, therefore bumping the Winchester COVID rates up. We've had, um, workers working in and out of hospitals, um, up and down the East Coast, we have transportation workers like, um. The gentleman who's just speaking, flying all over the country, we have people working in construction every day since the beginning of this pandemic. And we have kept the numbers where they are, uh, so that's just a point to make about that concern, that's all, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. DeLeo, and I'm, if you'll take the, allow me to take the liberty, I see, uh, Ms. Penny is back, I would like to give her one more chance. Since she has, um, patiently tried to speak, uh, Ms. Penny, uh, if you could state your name and address and we'll see if we can hear you this time.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we do hear you.
Sorry, I switched to my phone, so I thought that might work.
Perfect, thank you.
I am a teacher at Lincoln Elementary and I actually had a question, um, so in a lot of these meetings, um, it's been stated. That the district is still planning on teaching one hundred percent of the curriculum. Um, Dr. Evans also addressed this specifically in her frequently asked questions. However, the district has been employing teachers all summers specifically to cut our standards by fifty percent. Um, I'm on a number of these committees myself and we've all been working under the direction of the district to cut our standards by fifty percent. In preparation for having less time to teach, um, so I just wanted to make sure that that was something that everyone's aware of. And also, um, ask why that contradiction exists, thank you for all of your, um, patience with letting me speak.
You're very welcome, thank you, Ms. Penny, um, we do not, uh, typically respond to questions and there is a curriculum update and a return to school update. So my hope is that, uh, the, the answer to your question may be somewhere in one of those presentations taking place. So with that, I would like to close public comment, um, I would like to ask the indulgence of the committee if we take one item out of order. I'd like to move the vote to approve mass DOT plans and easements for intersection sidewalk and bicycle improvements around Vince Knowen. I'd like to take that out of order because the two speakers are, um, are time limited and I would like to do that. So, uh, Ms. Bollniers, we have, um, uh, I need to elevate, uh, Ms. Rudolph, who is the town engineer. And, um, I need to find the name of the attorney as well.
I got them.
Thank you very much, um. I'll wait and see if they are able to unmute themselves and if we can hear them. And if you are able to turn on your videos so we can see you, that would be welcome. But if you don't have, aren't in position to do that, that's fine as well.
Hi, Gillian Barger, from Anderson Creek. How are you?
Good, thank you. Welcome. Thank you for coming. And I see Ms. Rudolph. I just wanted to know if she's able to hear us and unmute.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we now can hear you. Thank you very much.
Point of information, Mr. Chairman. So for this presentation, are you able to share screen? Or does Beth or our guest have a presentation? What's, I think what's in our packet is sort of turned 90 degrees.
So I was going to see if Ms. Rudolph was able to present and if not, I was going to go ahead and pull that up. So.
I can try to, here, I don't have, I'm actually on vacation this week, so I am in a spot with not fantastic wifi. So I can share my screen, but my Zoom is.
Okay, so why don't?
So.
Why don't I pull? You sent it to me and I can pull it up. I have the PowerPoint. Let me share it in a second.
Thank you.
I'm limited with my abilities with PowerPoint, so I'm always trying to be careful. So with that, let me share a screen. Can people see the presentation? And.
Yes.
That's there. I'm not sure if there's a way to not sure if there's a way to present it other than like do the presentation or just have it the way it is. Is this okay?
Okay, for me.
Okay, excellent. So.
Looks good, looks good on, looks good on win cam, Brian.
Excellent, excellent. Ms. Rudolph, if you'd like to present, thank you for coming on your vacation.
Yeah, no problem. Thanks for having. I know you guys have a very full agenda. Would you mind going to the, to the next slide, please?
Absolutely.
So just to give you an overview of this project, back in June of 2013, some members of the Vincent Owen Committee School Community applied for what's called the Safe Roots to School through the Massachusetts Department of Transportation or Mastot. This was around the time that there was a redistricting effort for moving some kids from Ambrose to.
Ms. Rudolph, we've lost your audio. We still unable to hear you, Ms. Rudolph.
Point of order, Mr. Chair, is there someone else who is able to present this until Ms. Rudolph is back?
I do not believe. There is no one else who is prepared to present on this. So if we cannot hear Ms. Rudolph, we will have to.
Can you hear me now?
Now we can hear you, yes.
Okay, so I actually call, I have, I don't know if you're able to elevate the, I called in on my phone as well, just so I could, I was worried about the wifi. Are you able to elevate that as well? And I can talk through my phone instead of trying to use my.
I believe so, Ms. Bollinger. Can you tell us your telephone number? Well, can you text it or whatever you want?
Yeah, it's 781-879-5077.
So have you been able to locate that telephone number?
No.
No.
So it might show up because I logged into my phone, it might show up as bathroom as well.
Well, now there's two bathrooms have been elevated, it looks like.
Sorry, I think I found you. I couldn't find my picture to unmute myself.
Okay.
Did I get you?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Is there an echo?
That was an echo.
Go, it's one of, making one of the two. No, okay. Okay, so.
We can hear you now and if we can't hear you, we will let you know. Thank you so much for bearing with us.
Yeah, sure. No, I apologize. This is not the greatest technology setup for me, so I apologize.
And now we.
So 2019, I'm responsible for securing the right of way.
Ms. Rudolph, we cannot hear you consistently. Are you talking from your phone or from the Zoom in call?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Now we hear you. If you, I'm going to mute. Turn your volume down and we should be able to hear you.
All right. Better?
Now we hear you.
Excellent. Okay, sorry. All right. So so now we're in the process where we have to acquire the right of way. So that means that we have to.
Could you back up a little bit? We missed some of what you were saying. My apologies. Thank you.
No, no, I apologize. So March 2017, the project was formally approved by the Mass DOT Project Review Committee. This is a little bit of a different project where it's not grant money given to the town. It's just that the, the state actually hires the engineer and the contractor to construct the improvement. So it's a little bit different, whereas the state is in the driver's seat as the town, as opposed to the town being the driver's seat. So the 25% design hearing for this project was held by the, by Mass DOT in September 2019 at the Vincent Owen School. And the project has progressed through to 100% design at this point. And now the town of Winchester is responsible for what's called securing the right of way for the project. So there are 15 temporary easements on private property that are required, including a couple easements on the Vincent Owen School property that I'll talk about in a minute in order for the, for the project to be constructed. The schedule overall is that this fall, Mass DOT will be bidding the project and selecting a contractor over the winter and then they hope to start construction in spring of 2021. Next slide, please.
Certainly. You should be able to see the next slide.
So overall, just to talk through some of the proposed improvements. So you may recall that the town of Winchester went forward several years ago with the installation of what we called a temporary traffic signal at the intersection of Johnson Road and Ridge Street due to the safety concerns there. This project will, will install a permanent traffic signal and it will also install a left turning lane from Johnson Road on to Ridge Street as you're coming, as you're headed towards Lexington. The installation of new sidewalks and ADA compliant ramps on Johnson Road and on the west side of Ridge Street. Installation of a new crosswalk and rapid flashing beacon at Coolidge and Ridge Streets. And then also the slight widening of Ridge Street so that there's a usable shoulder for bicycle accommodations. And if you could go to the next slide, please. So this is a plan, this is the pavement marking plan, which I think probably best shows what, what the project will look like at the end. This is the intersection of Johnson Road and Ridge Street. So new crosswalks striped all the way around at the four intersections. There'll be a slight widening of the intersection to accommodate a left turn lane from Johnson Road on to Ridge Street so that the corner at the Vincent Owen School be, that radius will be opened up a little bit. Next slide, please. Sorry, I'm having a little trouble with my connection. Let me just.
Okay, move to the next slide.
That's fine. Yeah, I have it up on my own computer. So the next slide shows the improvements in front of Johnson Road, excuse me, in front of Vincent Owen School on Johnson Road. So the bus turnout will be basically where it is today. On the right side of your screen is where the driveway opening is to the Vincent Owen School. There'll be no work past that driveway opening. And really, they'll be, they'll be very closely following that existing curb line, although they do have to move it back slightly to start the widening for the new turn lane on Johnson Road. And if you could go to the next slide. So the next slide shows the layout on Ridge Street and you can see there'll be a new crosswalk on Arisha, Arisha Lane and then a new crosswalk on Coolidge Road. We were unable to construct a new sidewalk along, I guess that's the east side of Ridge Street because there's significant grade differential there and trees in that area that we would have had to put in walls and take down a lot of trees. So what we've done is try to create a safe crossing for folks to go from the Coolidge Road and Arisha Lane neighborhoods to the other side of Ridge Street where there is a, a safe crosswalk and there'll be a rapid flashing beacon at Coolidge Road. Next slide, please. So the project requires the taking of two temporary and one permanent easements on the Vincent Owen School property. The first is what's called XT E7, so that's just kind of the Mass DOT nomenclature at the corner of Johnson Road and Ridge Streets. That's an area about eight, just over 8,000 square feet. And it's a temporary easement required for grading and construction access to the site. So that's the area right at the corner that's kind of open now. I think there's actually a telephone easement there for like a small switching station.
Do you want me to move to the next slide to show that or do you want to wait till we get there?
Yeah, we can just wait a second. I'll just run through this slide first. Thank you. So it, I think the contractor, what Mass DOT is probably looking for, the contract to be able to use that space to kind of park vehicles during construction. And then also because the curb line is going to be moved back, there'll be some regrading at that area. But it would be off, off of the sidewalk area in a safe space so that there wouldn't be any impact to the, to the kids in that area. The next, the next temporary easement is along the frontage of Johnson Road. It's a temporary easement for grading purposes to install the new curbing and sidewalk. So as I mentioned, they have to push that curbing and sidewalk in a little bit closer to the school. The sidewalk itself will stay on the, on the, within the town's right of way. But in order to install it, they have to kind of step on the school property, which is why there is required a temporary easement. And then finally, the last one is a permanent easement required for tree trimming and overhead wires located on Ridge Street just across from Vincent Circle. This one's about just under 490 square feet. That's an area where there's currently no sidewalk. It's, it's covered in vegetation. And I think when the school was redeveloped, that area was kind of, it was determined that it wasn't really possible to put a sidewalk in that area. So there's two documents that we're looking for the school committee to approve and sign. The first is a certificate of donation for those two, two temporary and one permanent easements. And the second is a grant of easement document. And Gillian Barger from Anderson Creek can speak more to the legal points of those if they have, if you have questions. But if you could go to the next slide, I'll just finish running through those locations for the temporary easements. So the first one, as I mentioned, is at the corner of Johnson Road and Ridge Street. It's a fairly large area, which is now kind of just used for maintenance vehicles, DPW parks there, the police parks there, a crossing guard may park there from time to time as well. Next slide, please. The next one is the temporary easement that runs along the frontage of the Vincent Owen School property. So it's a fairly narrow temporary easement area just for those, for the reconstruction of that sidewalk and for grading purposes. And finally, if you go to the next slide, this is the, shows the, the location of the permanent utility easement. And if you go to the very last slide, I have, I just took a screenshot from Google Maps of the area on the left is where you see that where that temporary easement will be. So that's, there'll be so, a few of these trees that will have to be trimmed and you can see the existing overhead wires there. So because of how they have to move the wires at the intersection to accommodate the new traffic signals, those wires will be pushed in a little bit further on, and there'll be an overhead wire going across the Vincent Owen School property, which is why there is the need for a permanent easement. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions and thank you for your patience with my technology issues.
Thank you very much. I will open it up to the committee if they have any questions for Ms. Rudolph or for Attorney Barger. Ms. Bollinger.
Ms. Rudolph, could you, thank you very much for the information. And could you just talk a little bit about the calendar, the construction calendar?
Sure. So because this is a state project and not a town of Winchester project, I am not fully, unfortunately, within, in control of that schedule. What the state has told me is that they expect to be bidding the project this fall and they will award it over the winter. Construction would start in, I would guess, spring to, early to late spring of 2021. I would hope that they would, you know, get a good chunk of that construction done over the summer and fall. Although I believe they are estimating it could take a year for construction. That seems, in my experience, it seems like a long time. So I'm hopeful that, you know, obviously there's a little bit of lead time with ordering the traffic signals and that type of stuff. But I'm hopeful that it can be done, you know, within the 2021 calendar year. But like I said, unfortunately, because it's not a town project, I don't have 100% control over that schedule.
Thank you very much. Any additional questions from the committee?
I have a question. Does Dr. Evans have any recommendations or any suggestions?
Thank you for, for asking me to weigh in on this. There have been several really great projects that have come out of the Safe Roots to School collaboration and the town, Beth Rudolph and others in, on the town side have really supported the school district with this project in particular, the students and families who come to VO and we want them to walk safely. The temporary traffic light has made a huge difference. I know I commute from that direction and it has been, it was like a wild west before that traffic light was put in. And so we want to encourage students to walk and I know Beth and others have put in a lot of energy to make this happen. I think this is a technical vote for the temporary easements and the one permanent easement. That's not going to affect use of our school property in any way. And I would support a positive vote on both requests. I know that this is a time sensitive vote because things need to get moving in the next week. And so that's why Beth's calling in from her vacation, trying to pull it all together for us. So my recommendation would be to support.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Are there additional questions from the committee?
I would like to make a motion if you're ready.
Yes, and I would like to ask Ms. Rudolph and Attorney Barger if there's specific language. I think you gave a specific language. I want to make sure. I know there was specific language that we needed to have motion of and I'm looking in our packet. If you guys could remind me of the document and what the specific language we would need to vote is.
Yeah, I would defer to Gillian if she's able to, to give you that language.
Sure, let me just pull it up.
You received a number of documents. I just want to make sure we're not doing this next week again.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, what I see is vote to approve the signing of the certificate of donation document and the grant of easement document as presented.
All right, if that was our motion.
Does that sound acceptable, Attorney Barger?
That sounds good to me.
So.
Second.
So moved and seconded. Are any, any further questions or comments on the motion?
I just want to say thank you to the once VO PTO parents who now find themselves high school parents who got this started many, many years ago. Safe Roots to School is a great program. But as I think the town engineer alluded in her opening remarks, it started many years ago and the pace of these projects are not as fast as we would like. But I really appreciate all the effort that went into this, that got it started many, many moons ago when the kids were half the size they are today.
All those kids will be able to use the signal now that they're driving.
Yay, I like that. Yeah. That rings true, Beth, given. That rings true, Beth, given that one of my kids now has a license and one is a driver's ed. Well, well played, well played.
So seeing no additional questions or comments, I would call the vote. Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Ms. Marshat?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Ms. Bollinger?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, vote is unanimous. Ms. Rudolph and Ms. Berger, I will coordinate with you for the signing of the documents that need to be done in the coming days. And I would echo also what Mr. Nixon said, thanking you for really sticking with the project over the course of seven years to see it almost come to its fruition. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate your support.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. With that, we will return to our agenda as originally planned. So the first report and discussion item is the district pre-K to 12 curriculum updates. This will take us a few moments because we have a number of educators we need to elevate. So Ms. Bollinger will help us, help me with that, and I will work on it as well. So if you could all bear with us.
Sorry, I'm looking for my email.
Dr. Ellen Emma, just give us a moment unless, it probably is easiest if we get everybody elevated first.
Yeah.
I just elevated Mary Costello. Dr. Ellen Emma, was there anybody else?
We have, we have, we have the list of the earlier emails, and I will start working on that. Yes, it'll take us probably two or three minutes to get this.
Okay, I must have missed.
Ms. Plasky?
Okay.
Mr. Kerr Hyatt? Ms. Minugian? Do you work on the bottom of the list when you get, when you find the email?
I'm trying to get off of your shared screen. Hold on.
Okay. Ms. Vareta?
Okay.
Ms. Ruben Bell? Ms. Malone? Marshon? Egan? Ms. McElhany? Cornyn? Ms. Dean, I will assume is, oh, no, I see Danielle Dean, who's a panelist. The last would be Ms. Batinelli. And I think that we have promoted everyone who needed to be promoted. My apologies for the, you know, like the time that took. Dr. Ellen Emma, if you would like to proceed again, let me pull up the agenda again. For the district pre-K to 12 curriculum update, you have, sharing your screen, thank you very much.
Great. Thank you so much for allowing us this opportunity. And sorry for all the work of elevating everyone. It has truly been such a district effort that I think it's really important that the people that are working closely with the different groups have an opportunity to share. So I'll talk a little bit, kind of from the big picture view and what we're all working on. And then people will share lots of the exciting things that are happening within their areas. It's been amazing. So what's kind of been driving us around our summer curriculum and PD and what we've been working on? So this has really been an opportunity for us as a district, obviously, starting immediately in the closure back in March, and really working full steam effort after school closed in June to really ask ourselves, what is most important for our students to know and be able to do? And, and why are these skills and practices important? So there have been amazing, tough wrestling conversations in every area, pre-K to 12, across the content areas. What do we think is most urgent? And, and why are those things urgent? And again, as a pandemic, silver lining has really helped us to say, you know, just because we've done things one way for a long time, it's really important that we, we look with fresh eyes and with our new training and expertise and what we're hearing and, and figuring out just what is critical. How do we ensure their learning is deep, authentic, and meets the need of the whole child? So obviously, this is not just around our curriculum work, but this is around our professional development. And what do we need and how do we support them? And how do we best hook our students so that they're excited, engaged, and collaborative? So really, as we're making decisions about what to teach, how to teach, different models that we're looking at, and hybrid and remote and in person, these are really the things that are constantly driving us and what we're thinking about. So for each of the content areas and for each of the areas pre-K to 12, everyone is working on a template that parents will receive, students will receive. And this will allow everyone to really, on the same page, around these important categories. So these will be posted on our website. People are still working very hard on them, but we will have a template for just about every course that we're working on in the district. So we're starting with what are our major essential questions? What are we really doing to hook our students in? These often ask the why. Why is it meaningful? Why is it important? Why are we doing this? And asking them to make connections often between the real world, their own lives, and the content that they're exploring. So what are those essential questions for each course, for each grade level? And really coming to consistent agreement on these across the areas. So people will share in a little while with you about what they've been doing and how many people are working on it and just how invested they are. But really, really critical that it's consistent across the district in these main areas that you will see on the templates. So how each student gets there, what resources they use, how they access it, how they show that they've learned may be different and should be different from child to child, to classroom to classroom. But in the end, that we're clearly identifying the critical things that each of our students will be able to, will know and be able to do in each of the courses. So what are the major understandings that we want them to really have? What do we need them to leave each course in each grade knowing? We know that the spring, obviously, was new territory. And what happens each year, obviously, builds on future years. So it's really important that we ensure that all of the students are leaving with the same pieces because we had a year last year that was different and in many ways disruptive. And we will have a year this year that is like that. So we need to ensure for our students that there are consistent experiences, consistent expectations, and that when we return to the new normal, whatever that may be, hopefully, the following fall, that we all have the same foundation and we're ready to work with that. So to that end, the next category is the prioritized standards. So we take our standards from the state, which always, always has been our standard. There is no way to do all of the standards in all of the areas that they mandate. So we have worked on prioritizing them. And as a district, we have been doing this for the past few years anyway in saying, what are the essential standards? What are the important standards? And what are the nice to know standards? We know now more than ever that this effort is critical in terms of consistency. So teachers have been working very hard to determine what are the most essential standards. We don't know what this year will bring. We need to clearly identify what all students will leave every grade and every content area mastering. And then what are areas that we know may not be as important and that we may not get to all of those standards? And that may be what we need for our jumping off spot for the next year. Clearly, as we go through the year, we will continue to assess and reassess as we are in new territory. But every parent and student will get these prioritized standards before the year starts. As you know, PBAs has been one of our major district goals. So each of the courses and content areas are developing at least two common PBAs, performance-based assessments, where students will showcase their learning on at least one of the essential standards for the year. Many PBAs hit several essential standards. Across the board, teachers also will have other common assessments. And so parents and students will know these main topics for the common assessments and for the PBAs for this coming year. As well as the resources, we often have a variety of resources. Again, we want to differentiate for different learning styles, different needs. But we will have a list of different resources that obviously go beyond the classroom textbook into other areas that teachers consistently access based on the needs of the students in front of them. So this will really come in the form of a template that we will be posting for all content and grade level areas. Okay, so attached to your email, school committee today, you had the very long list of all the professional developments. These are just some highlights. And we put these in here to just show that these are clearly connecting to what we've said in the previous slides. We want to meet the needs of the whole child. We want to make sure to engage them. We want to make sure to hook them in the learning. We want to focus on what platforms work with that and what ways we can learn more so that we can service them better. So teachers are learning from hands-on workshops to make and takes, to book groups, to different discussions, lots of ways for us to access and learn and grow so that we can better help the students. So I just want to throw out a few statistics that truly have been amazing this summer. I, I can't say enough about how committed, collaborative, and productive people have been. Our summer workshops, we had over 2,000 attendees with our employees. And we have over 200 teachers working directly on curriculum this summer. That's in addition to the workshops and courses. So those are really two different tracks that we have going simultaneously that have an amazing amount of engagement from our teachers. So I can't say enough great things about how involved everyone has been in really, really trying to learn and grow and be ready for this year. And I'd like to introduce Katie Malone, who will talk just a little bit about what's going on with the elementary literacy. And I think Katie's having a hard time getting on right now. She joined and it was turning out to be a webinar. Although I use the same link that she, I use the link she gave me, and I'm on. So I'm not sure, but she's still trying. We'll come back to elementary literacy if she can't get.
I'm promoting, I'm promoting for a panelist now. I promoted her at one point, but I think I must have not done it properly.
There she is.
My apologies. There were a large list, and I, I must have somehow not done it properly. Thank you.
Still with us, Katie? Okay, we'll move on to Julie McElhany Gorman. We'll talk about math, and we'll come back to literacy if Katie can hop back on.
Thank you. So when I was thinking about what I wanted to share about elementary math and the summer work, the two words that came to mind are similar, the words that Jen used also, because it's just all over the place this summer, collaboration and commitment. In terms of the math curriculum work, those who were able to commit to different parts for the whole summer, we have 30 teachers at the elementary level involved in the math. The standard prioritization work showed consistent commitment to deep strategy-based relational understanding of math concepts. And this was interesting because although all the grade levels from pre-K to fifth grade started off with a couple of meetings sort of centering us and going over what our work would be, then the grade level cohorts went off on their own and, and began to work with their colleagues. And what was great is, as I joined different meetings, was to see the consistent commitment to this. Each grade level team were looking at essential questions and enduring understandings and really thinking, what relational understanding of math concepts? What number sense can we bring to our kids? And what do we need them to know? And they really zeroed in with laser focus, which was fabulous to see. It, it provided consistency among grade levels and some good continuity as the kids go through the grade levels. And lastly, the elementary math workshops, which focused on building number sense, supporting fluency, which it turns out has changed its definition. So I'll just share that with you. For those who are not aware of this, fluency is no longer equated with automaticity. But instead, fluency of math facts is equated with strategy-based knowledge, which is a whole nother topic that I love and would love to, I could go on for a long time, but I will not because this is not actually a math workshop that I am on right now. And then finally, using inquiry-based methods to teach mathematical concepts. And these workshops have had over 150 participants. I've run a bunch, and we have math curriculum leaders at each grade level that have also run them. And they'll run again in, or new ones, plus the ones that have been run will be repeated during those 10 days of PD. So we'll have even more than 150 participants.
Thank you, Julie. It looks like Katie is back in. So we'll return to the elementary literacy piece.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. So I'm just going to echo some of the things that Jen said in her intro about our amazing staff and the collaboration that they are engaging in this summer. Many of the teachers that I've spoken with outside of these curriculum meetings have highlighted the power of this time together. So in elementary literacy, the reach was far and wide across the district. Every building was represented in the work that we were doing. Our grade level groups included classroom teachers, reading specialists, EL teachers, special educators, and administrators. So they were groups of many minds coming together. The teachers really valued sharing their ideas and their voices with each other while collaborating on the shared goals of establishing the best things that our students will need this year. There were deep conversations about what our students will learn and how they'll apply that to the real world. And we explored the connections that are made across the various ELA strands, weaving together the meaningful work that students will do in reading, writing, language, speaking, and listening. So, and similar to what Julie was saying, you know, there was a lot of professional development that went on, offered by myself and the literacy coaches and some of our classroom teachers as well, to really deepen the work that everybody was doing with this curriculum piece as well.
Thank you, Katie. And we're going to go on to our elementary social studies. I just want to give a shout out to this team. We obviously don't have an elementary coordinator, but we have a core group of teachers around social studies that have been very, very passionate on the work with this. And a couple of them could not be here tonight, Betty Beauchamp, Tara Tully, and Heather Chu. But they partnered up with Paul D. Benedictus and Cindy Revel, who are here tonight, and share with you a little bit about the very exciting work that's been happening with social studies because this dovetails beautifully also with our SEL work, as does everything embedded. But as they have new standards, this has really been a nice time to look at the SEL as well as the teaching tolerance standards as we're looking at the new social studies. So Paul and Cindy, take it away.
Thank you, Jen. I'm Cindy Revel. I'm a third grade teacher. And I'm here with my colleague, Paul D. Benedictus. He's a fourth grade teacher, and we're both at Lincoln Elementary School. So this spring and summer, there is a new call to teachers and students to learn and do as much as we can to fight bias and racism and social injustices. And as Jen said, the timing really aligns with our work to prioritize and prepare because we need to teach new state standards for social studies. So we've had the privilege of receiving training from the group teaching tolerance for years. for years in our district. And Teaching Tolerance, I think of as like an educational think tank for the Southern Poverty Law Center. And their training and their resources and the meetings we've had with them this summer have helped us to make connections between the social studies that we teach and the world that we want to help create alongside our students. It's a world where we face our past and we work to improve the future for everyone. We've also had the privilege of meeting and training this summer with Claudia Foxtree, who's a Native American activist, educator, and artist. So Paul is going to talk about some of the dovetailing of the social justice standards and the elementary social studies units.
Thanks, Cindy. Hi, everybody. I thought that this was, in putting together some slides, we determined that this was a real, one of the unique pieces of our, of the social studies curriculum team. So whereas, of course, we're doing everything regarding essential questions and understandings, that this piece was one worth sharing. So the social, the Teaching Tolerance is social justice standards have, there are 20 of them, grouped into five standards per broad category. So the first five are under identity, the second five are under diversity, we've got justice, and then action. And what I've done here is just grabbed, you know, a kind of a random essential question from each of the grades and paired it with some sort of social justice standard. And really, honestly, there could be arguments made for varying justice standards for each of these essential questions. I'm not going to take the time to read all of them to you, but I'll show you, you know, for example, on this page here, we've got grade one. The essential question is, what does, what does diversity look like within different communities? Just one of the standards that that matches is the identity standard number two, which says, "Students will develop language and historical and cultural knowledge that affirm and accurately describe their membership in multiple identity groups." And the great thing is that, is that these standards are meant for K to 5, so that this will look differently at each level. Jen, if you popped the, thank you.
I read your mind, Paul.
Yeah. So let's go, we'll just pop to grade three here. Essential question, "How do the interactions of different cultures shape a society?" And one of the standards it fits is the diversity one. Number 10, "Students will examine diversity in social, cultural, political, and historical contexts rather than in ways that are superficial or oversimplified." These are all big, big concepts that are, that are, man, that's a, that's a heavy one right there, huh? It's, it's big and it's good, so we're, we're trying to put it all together. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Catherine Dwyer couldn't be here tonight to talk a little bit about elementary science, but she put this slide together to kind of highlight some of the work that people have been doing in elementary around this. And when we talked today, she said, "Make sure you make the most important point", which is that every bit of our focus is, "How do we make science hands-on learning?" So regardless if students are remote, or if they're in class, or if they're in a hybrid, that they have these experiences that really allow for them. Anyone who knows Catherine knows she believes, get outside, get into the science, get into the nature, get hands-on, be doing something, and hook the students that way. Make it inquiry-based, so they're curious and they're wondering and they're exploring. Catherine has also been a part, an integral part of our cross-district MCIA team and constantly working on building PBAs with people and also reaching out and doing these PBAs so that it is authentic learning with our students with different town resources, such as WinCam and DPW and other ways that we can connect to the community. And so they have this core group that's really been working on how to develop these pieces, and not only within our district, but also with other towns. So as cross-district groups and parts of different consortiums, how do we learn from others as well and how do we all share our best resources? And then constantly thinking about, right at the elementary level, you know, everyone is a master of, supposed to be a master of all of the content areas. So, you know, teachers have passion in different areas and how do we build a core group that can go back and help their other team members? As some people are focusing on social studies or English or math. So how do we bring those teams together so everyone really shares their expertise? So that's been another great piece of the collaboration, is allowing people to really focus as part of the team. All right, Carolyn Flosky is here to talk about secondary English.
Thank you. So this summer, the secondary English department from grade 6 through 12, 25 of us have really focused on selecting and developing diverse texts into curriculum. Last year, we had made a list of every text that a child would encounter as they progressed from grade 6 through 12. And we examined those texts for who they represent, knowing that these choices influence engagement, worldview, and a sense of inclusion. As part of that, we looked at the identity and the authenticity of the author and the characters. We looked at stereotypes and misrepresentations. We looked at gaps and silences. And we also looked at the historical, social, and cultural context in which the texts were written. Prioritizing texts is so hard, because we as English teachers can see value in each of them. So we use, this is our lens to provide a focus for summer curriculum work and a consistent experience for students taking the same course, regardless of the teachers they might have. And this practice led to more collaboration this summer than I've ever seen before in our department. On the slides specifically, you can see some of the titles that were newly selected for development. And this is only the beginning. We look forward to kicking off the school year on August 31st with a Teaching Tolerance Professional Development Session that is tailored just to English appropriate, so that our texts move beyond multicultural and into social justice and cultural responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Sandy Menugian is with us to talk about what's happening with secondary math.
Hello, thank you for having me. And I want to just echo everyone else's words in terms of the dedication, the level of dedication the math teachers have shown. 25 out of 28 of the math teachers have been involved in one way or another in the curriculum development this year, this summer, and we've had some great conversations. We've been working diligently throughout the summer to prioritize the standards and develop a curriculum that will provide our students with critical skills that they're going to need to move on to the next course. With that, we have, we have had these intense conversations about how we can foster an attitude within our students that challenges are what makes us better and mistakes are going to allow our minds to grow, you know, in the mindset, Joe Bowler and all that she supports. So with that, after we developed our prioritized standards, we then went into, because we're math people, we tried to create some planning documents. We wanted to make sense of the chaos. And a number of the courses, the teachers sat down and did that. And we really had conversations about how can we conduct a class, because we are so used to doing the collaboration and we have students in groups and talking about strategies. And we're not going to be able to do that in the hybrid model as it stands now. So we talked about different things that we could do to have students still be able to do that collaboration. If we do breakout sessions or breakout rooms, we could still have them do that. We then went on to talk about some of the workshops our teachers have attended. And they have attended so many. Just to give you an idea, eight of our math teachers attended the Bureau of Educational Research on strengthening your online math instruction. And we, we got a lot of great tips and tools that we want to take a look at during our PD over the next week. And some of these are listed here with Equatio and Desmos. Desmos in particular has really expanded on their program and they have now have components that are tied to SEL. And they have an interactive component, so that I could put up a do now and the students and do it, and I will be able to see all of the students' responses on Desmos. Along with, we just found out about whiteboard.fi, and that's going to be another great tool so that we can really get to know if students are understanding the concepts. And so we're looking to have some PD on whiteboard.fi as well, along with Desmos, Equatio. We talked about our formative and summative assessments. We had an actual curriculum that we met to talk about what we're going to do. And it was amazing that we had about 12 people show up just to talk about what it's going to look like. And then the conversation changed and shifted, and we were talking about maybe developing or implementing some components of standard-based grading to promote equity. And so we're going to talk a little bit about that during our PD. One of our big things was to certainly develop some performance-based assessments. And as you can see here, this is just a very small, small representation of the different types of performance-based assessments that are from the road trip. Performance-based assessment is for grade 6. The keyboard and scratch transformation is in grade 9, and it goes all the way up to the statistics research project that's in grade, grade 12. So we've spent a lot of time in research, different sites to get ideas, to talk about rubrics, and what are the important takeaways from those PBAs. So I think that's about, those are the main things that I'd like to focus on.
Great, thank you, Sandy. And we have Mike Marsh on here to talk about what's happening with secondary science.
Good evening, everyone. Let me just make sure I am here, okay? All right, so we are working diligently, as is everybody else. First and foremost, to make sure we get those power standards, make sure we all agree on what we are teaching 6 through 12. It is so important, particularly for courses like science, where one year builds on another, that we do have that foundation. So that's been the first priority from all of the teachers. And we have teachers working 6th grade, 7th grade, 8th grade, 9th grade, 10th grade, and then also our electives up at the high schools as well. So not quite every single class, but almost there. Once teachers come to an agreement on our standards that we all will cover, the next challenge that we really are facing is how do we keep things interactive? How do we, how do we give students the lab experience or the science, with the science practices? And so, you know, teachers are looking at different ways of using videos to help out with that, using maybe subscriptions to software type of programs where the students can run virtual experiments, where they can change the variables as well as collect data. Once you can collect data, you can then, of course, analyze it and run through everything else, but that collection of the data is so important. And then, you know, YouTube videos, channels that are out there also help with that. Some of the videos, some of the programs that we've seen actually have real students videoing themselves doing the experiments, and you can have them still change the variables. So there's real interesting things out there. And so that's, that's what I think most of the teachers now are looking on once they've figured out the standards, is how do we get that piece? How do we get that active piece? I should, I also forgot to mention, I think, you know, just getting the kids outside to run experiments or surveys or collecting data on their own is going to be valuable for us, as well as using household materials to run experiments or run activities at home. So, you know, we really hope that we can, we can keep that interactive piece with our, our students when they are at home. Okay, thanks.
Keeping with our hands-on theme that Catherine pushes at the elementary, carrying it through. Thanks, Mike. Okay, and Chris Gehiatt is here to talk about social studies at the secondary level.
Thank you. Social Studies had a little bit of a leg up on some of this curriculum work, because the state recently adopted new social studies frameworks. So we had a lot of teachers who were already on board, looking at our curriculum, looking at the new standards, realigning some of the classes that we currently teach and kind of reimagining the kinds of classes that we might be able to teach going forward. So it's been great. You know, the teams were already in place and the collaboration has continued. So I would just echo a lot of what everybody else has been said, saying about the, the collaboration. I have been extremely impressed, because we have a great mix of veteran and new teachers. And so the opportunity for them in each of these grade-level discussions to bounce ideas off of each other, for, for veterans to be able to share what has worked and their content knowledge, and newer teachers with a lot of new ideas, especially the incorporation of new software and new platforms, has been great and really generated a lot of great discussion. One of, one of the things, you know, jumping off a little bit of what Cindy and Paul and the elementary social studies teachers have been focusing on is the conversations that have been happening with our 7th, 8th, 10th, and 11th grade teams have been particularly interesting, because with 7th grade, it's a world geography and cultures course. And so the teachers already do a great job of not just looking at geographical features, but really helping to get their, get their students to understand the lives and livelihoods of the people of those areas. And so I think that kind of helps to get a greater appreciation of the general sense of human dignity and equality that everybody has and the different challenges that people face throughout the world. Our 8th grade curriculum, it's a US History I, but the new frameworks have a civics component. And so the, the 8th grade teachers have been looking at the, the adoption of some of the new civic standards and getting students to be more active and thinking about ways that they can use their voice and use their influence in their community. And then our 10th and 11th grade classes, the 10th grade is a modern world history course, and the teachers there have been having some very, really dynamic discussions, especially a couple of them have taken the Claudia Foxtree and Teaching Tolerance workshops this summer and really beginning to think about how the world has been shaped and looking at kind of the, the sense of decolonizing our curriculum and, and beginning to look at the implications of colonialism in the 19th century and nationalist movements in the post, post-World War II world and how a lot of those different dynamics helped to shape what was going on in those, in those parts of the world as many people tried to assert their independence and create a sense of self-determination and self-government while dealing with two superpowers who were using some as chess pieces. And so really beginning to see how a lot of those, kind of international dynamics played out. And our 11th grade curriculum is a, is a modern US history curriculum. And so beginning to the discussions of how do we help the students connect what's going on electorally this year, as far as issues with regards to social justice, racial equality, being, being able to begin to trace what's going on in the present day and see the roots of some of those issues in our, in our modern US history from the Reconstruction period moving forward. So the, the discussions have been great. I have really enjoyed being a part of that at each of the different grade levels. 6th and 9th grade have been having great, some of the great, best resource sharing I've been seeing. So it's just been an exciting time to work with the social studies teachers this summer in helping, so that we can help our kids understand a lot of the craziness of 2020.
Thank you, Chris. But we have Anna Turoni and Tanya Ferretto and Karen Bagan here to talk a little bit about our World Language Department. Anna Turoni is supposed to lead us off, but she hasn't been elevated. Brian, would you be able to elevate her?
My apologies. I need to... I'm very sorry about that.
No worries.
I don't see her.
Now, we'll do, while you're looking for her, Brian, we'll just move to wellness and then we'll come back to the world language. So Jason will chat about wellness.
Hello, everybody. Yes, so the K through 12 Wellness Department is a pretty multifaceted group consisting of our PE and health teachers, K through 12, and our family consumer sciences groups at the secondary level when we're talking about curriculum. When we bring in the PD and training component, we also have our very valuable counselors as a part of this group. And the entire district when it comes to talking about SEL. Tonight, I have some of our elementary PE and health teachers here to help talk about what, what our work has been this summer. So Danielle Dean and Andrea Vatnelli.
Hi, everyone. I'm Danielle Dean. I teach P E and health over at Lynch. And just to kind of echo what a lot of the other departments have been saying and kind of what Jason just touched on, was that we have been meeting a lot and collaborating over the summer to really prioritize both state and shape standards that we feel should be at the front line of our lessons and our unit planning, along with trying to find the best ways to physically engage students. And specials will be on a virtual platform. In addition to highlighting these standards, we've also been placing a large focus on blending social emotional learning into all of our instruction as well. Andy, do you want to kind of stem off of that?
I'll jump off of that. So I'm Andrea Batnelli and I teach the physical education and health wellness over at Lincoln School. And again, I'm just going to echo the, the collaboration and the commitment that our team has been going through has been really unbelievable. Lots of productive conversations that have helped us really get to helping students, trying to figure out what the critical skills are that we want them to take away. And as Danielle has already said, we're, we're working on prioritizing and we're ripping apart all of these essential standards and through grades K through five and figuring out how we're going to teach them virtually so that kids really can take away the most important facts for their healthy lifestyle. The performance based assessments are ongoing. We're working with the different levels, the middle school, the high school on, you know, how we can make them best work for the kids throughout the grade levels.
Thank you, Andrea and Danielle.
Great. Thank you, guys. Jason, anything else on that that you want to talk about?
No, just, we have had, you know, as I said, to lead it off, the number of people throughout both the department and through the district participating in social emotional learning workshops and curriculum conversation has really been awesome and inspiring work to do this summer.
Great, thank you. And Anna, has Anna been able to join us?
I think we have elevated her.
Are you there, Anna?
Anna Tione.
Anna Tione. And so I didn't know if that was a typo. It was the.
It was a typo. Yeah, that's Anna.
Okay, perfect.
Good evening and greetings from the world language department. Thanks for letting me in. I, I want to tell you how happy we are. And I know that many of you heard me talk before, probably saying, I hope she stops sooner now. But this has been a great opportunity for our department. And all along, I've been hearing things about COVID like uncharted, unprecedented, unknown. But the U word that sticks out to me is unifying. This experience was so unifying for our department because for years, we've been, we moved, we made a paradigm shift from learning, just for the sake of learning words, grammar. We made this paradigm shift to proficiency where we developed thematic based units and we wanted the students to be able to use the language and grow and develop themselves as human beings with this language. And this gave us an opportunity for all our teachers to work together closely, no matter what language they work by level. Teachers took different courses. They brought to the team what they learned. Teachers that were experienced, worked with new teachers. It was wonderful. But I'm going to keep talking about this, but we have a couple of people in our department that I would like to present to you that will talk more about what we're doing with cell and P V As and social justice. By the way, Massachusetts does not have frameworks for, for world language. We haven't had them since 1999. And we have been working on them. They have now been delivered to the D E S I and they're going to be approved soon. And two elements that are going to be in the new frameworks is cell and social justice. So here we are again, Winchester, we're ahead of everybody. So I'm going to introduce to you Karen Fagan.
Thank you, Anna. So I wanted to, to echo Anna's, what she said about this is an exciting time for rural language. We've been so fortunate. Last year, we were able to introduce a sixth grade program for the first time. It was not a watered down program. It was exactly what the other grades have done and it was hugely successful, which we, we thought it would be. And it's been really exciting to see our young students really embrace rural language. It's not just about learning a language, but it's learning a culture. So they've learned how to appreciate and respect other cultures and customs, all of those kinds of things. Their proficiency, if you see on the slide, you see that sort of ice cream cone. You see, there's such a great proficiency going on. We're speaking so much in the target language. They're hearing so much, they're able to produce so much. So by starting in sixth grade, the level of proficiency that they can achieve by the end of high school is just tremendous. It's really quite exciting. So this summer, we've been spending an awful lot of time, we've been working so hard, developing, taking our curriculum and really thinking about remote learning and how we, how do you do that with rural language? When communication is at the heart of it. We've really learned so many digital tools that are just going to make it a really great opportunity for our students to collaborate, to be able to speak, to be able to communicate with each other. I think, I think it'll be a really, we're really excited about, about the program. And then I do want to just talk about the social emotional learning. It's at the heart of what we do as teachers all across the district. And I think this fall is going to be, it's going to be even more critical. We have to start with social emotional learning and we've, everybody in the district, we've all been working really hard at making sure we're finding ways to build community and building that social emotional learning. So what we've done this summer is we've developed a sort of a pre unit, a social emotional learning pre unit that can be used at each grade where we're going to be really focusing, starting with our ruler anchors that we've been working on, developing a class charter for building community. How do we want to feel each day when we go into class with our mood meter? And sort of the added benefit it is, we're in the different languages. Students are going to learn emotions for the, the, the target language. So not just English, but now in the language that they're learning. So I think we're working really hard on sort of building that sort of trust and community. So it's a really, really sort of exciting time. So I will head it off to Tanya to talk about P V As.
Hi, thank you. So I'm Tanya Ferretto and I teach Italian at the high school.
Sorry, can you just lean in a little bit? It's a little bit hard to hear you. Thank you.
Does this help?
Yes, thank you.
So I teach Italian at the high school, but really what language I teach is not as important because it's what I've done is work with everybody else. So we are all the world language team. It really doesn't matter what language we're teaching. While back in, in the days, every language had its own textbook. So we were on different paths. For the past several years, we have really worked in order to align all languages so that it didn't matter what language student would, would learn, but they would be exposed to very similar experiences, of course, with specifics to the culture that they would be learning. And that's very enriching also for us teachers because we get, I get to work with my colleagues in Italian, but also those who teach French and Spanish and Latin also. So that's been really wonderful. And sometimes we start, oh, what about in French? What about in Italian? And we think it's very exciting, but probably the students wouldn't think that. So we all started as a big team and then decided to go by level. So a level, for example, level three at the high school, level four. And I was in two teams, level three and level four. And what we did first as a group was literally go over the blueprint that we had already spent a few years working on. And based on the implementation of it for a couple of years, we reflected and we moved some units from one year to another, or even within the year, we changed the chronology, keeping in mind social emotional learning in particular and the need in this year. But then, you know, you can always learn from difficulties that this will work for every year. We really made sure that the first unit for three and four would be, and I saw that everybody else ended up doing the same thing, but the first units were where we could really make the deepest connection with our students. Let's say we start with hybrid and then things don't go well, let's say. Hopefully, everything will go great. We will have created that connection that will bring out the best for us and for our students because we saw, we see how important that is. So for example, for level three, we started with a brand new unit called stories. So they will learn about fairy tales in the country of the target language, but they create stories about themselves also and about emotions and things like that. So it'll be a wonderful progression. Instead, for level four at the high school, our first unit is the wellness and unit. And so I just wanted to bring up an example of the P V A that we have worked on. This one is pretty good. And what we've also been doing, sorry, I'm all over the place, is whatever we worked on, we wanted to be sure that we had both options to be able to have the students work on it, whether they were in person or should there be the possibility that will be distance learning at a certain point? Be ready for that too. So we've been trying to stay open about that and just know that it can be readjusted, no matter where we are, what we're doing. So this particular one, they have to create a service event. So they, there's an audience. And so it's about healthy living and habits and that they have choices of what it is that they want to talk about. Then they do some research and then they will have to write and they also have to speak. So here is where we'll see the proficiency of them being able to express themselves, their ideas. Things are really concrete, like this example, stay alive, don't drink and drive. This is for juniors, so it's really good. So we're trying to teach them about life and life in general. I guess that's ultimately what we do through all of the activities that we try to have them do, even if they're in a different language, which is a big obstacle. But they always do a terrific job. And I have that bit emoji up there, just this P V A we started was Ms. Yonkers and myself started working on it. And I just always love working with teachers from other cultures, you know, like linguistic cultures. And it's just been a fantastic experience. And I did want to add that I have loved working with brand new teachers that really haven't even taught yet at Winchester High School. And they've been working on this with us. And I think that was fantastic because when we start, they know exactly where we're headed. They own it because they were part of it. And while we were doing this, I have learned so much from them because they've taken all these courses, right? It's like, oh, I heard this, oh, really? So, and I might be able to talk about things I've experienced in class, but I have learned so much by working with the new teachers too. So I thought that was a fantastic thing also that we were able to do this year. So I hope this helps in what we've done this summer.
Great, thank you, Tanya. That is a great point. And across the district, we had many people that are, haven't even officially started with this, already on board in both professional development and curriculum work. So thanks for that plug about that, a great mutual learning experience. And we have Mary Costello here to talk about music, both at the secondary and elementary level. Mary.
Hi, good evening, everybody. And thank you for having me. I'm happy to present the music department this year and I'm proud to be a part of this amazing faculty that's worked so hard this spring and summer. It's, it's been unique, but not without some benefits too, right? We're rising to the challenge and exploring new ways of educating and, and learning ourselves. So it's, it's been a fascinating time. So for music, we actually did get new state frameworks this past year in 2019. So this has been kind of a nice first opportunity for us to dive deep into those and kind of prioritize those standards and see how our curriculum is aligning with those standards and making sure that we're not missing anything. On the slides here for the secondary level, I chose to highlight some of the enduring understandings that we have in our coursework. And these I focused, we have more, but I focused the ones tonight on our social emotional learning understanding. So we know that, that music is, goes hand in hand with social emotional learning. And I wanted to highlight some of the things that we're going to be focusing on this year. We certainly know that in this pandemic time, we've seen throughout the whole world that music was a source of comfort for many. And we want to make sure that our students know that they have that power within themselves to, to help themselves, to self regulate with music for themselves and for others. There, you know, our students have a lot to offer and they can do that through music. They're not powerless. And it's one of the things that we have always focused on in music. It's not necessarily learning the notes and the rhythms correctly. It's about what you do with that music. We are, you know, there are difficult times that, that students go through. And what we try to tell them, that a lot of people feel helpless in those difficult times, but musicians always have something to offer in those times. And it is a source of comfort and community for many. So we want to make sure that they know that. So one of our challenges though, as we go to remote learning for music, how we actually create those communities and, and help students to connect. We can do that because the most part, we know our students already, right? We've had years with these students. We love that about what we teach and we think that we can continue to build upon those community feelings. Prioritizing standards or focusing on elements that can be taught effectively and taking advantage of the time to do some things that we haven't been able to do in the traditional setting, right? There's always that performance pressure, certainly something that we love to do. That's why we, we learn instruments and we sing and, and we play together. But, you know, there is that pressure, right? We always are gearing toward the concerts. So looking ahead at this year, there will be fewer opportunities for that. So we can focus on the myriad of elements in music that don't necessarily involve performance. So we're excited about those possibilities. We've spent a lot of time researching and sitting in webinars and workshops and finding out all these amazing resources. Somebody who's been in Winchester since the early 90s. I perhaps have not been exposed to as many of these wonderful technology resources as some of our newer teachers. So it's been nice to learn from them about some technology options. And we're excited about what is available and the possibilities. Performance based assessments is second nature for music. That's what we do. But we are looking into other ways to do performance based assessments that don't necessarily involve playing, right? So it's, we automatically go to that playing or singing element, but there are other ways to do performance based assessments. So we're exploring like good educational ways to structure those. And finally, music is an area that truly benefits from intense individual preparation and skills. So we can certainly focus in on that in this remote learning environment, but it's at its best when it's shared with and for others, right? So we're developing these skills and love for music, but it is most powerful when we do it together and when we do it for other people. So we're going to continue to find ways that we can share music with the Winchester community. Many people may have seen random children in the middle of their street over the spring in Halloween costumes in April, playing songs while that, that was a coordinated effort by your music department to have kids out there. An idea that we called Wake Up Winchester. And there was a new song every one or two weeks where the kids everywhere from grades, you know, two through 12 were learning pieces of music and getting out on their front porches and playing. So we're hoping to continue to build some community, some mentorship with some of the younger students, with the older students and, and really benefit from this time in a different way. And that's it.
Great, thank you so much, Mary. And I would ask that all of the panelists from the presentation just stay on for a few minutes in case any of the school committee members have any direct questions for your area or for you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Ellen Emma, and thank you to, to everyone who came tonight. I know as both a school committee member, but as a parent, sometimes we only see and know what's going on in the classroom. And I spend a lot of time assuring parents how much professional development goes on throughout the year and this summer. And seeing this, I won't say it firsthand, but anybody who's on this and seeing the amount of work that's taking place, you, this is indeed a dream team and we have, you know, this is the, you know, amazing team of educators. amazing team of educators working together for our students. And I'm really impressed. So I want to thank you all. And with that, I would like to open it up to questions from the committee. If they have any questions or comments. And if possible, Dr. Ellen Emma, if I could ask if you could stop screen sharing so that we can see each other a little bit easier. We can always do that again if we need to, but it's hard to see the committee members if they have questions. So I would ask, in fact, I can't see all the committee members. Maybe I can. If there are any questions or comments from the committee, if you could let me know. There you go. Sorry, I'm Marcia. It's hard to see everyone. Thank you very much.
This was incredible. As usual, this is one of the most exciting presentations that we get to see as school committee members. So I want to thank the leadership team and all of the presenters tonight. It was incredibly moving and inspiring to see you all step into this role of modeling exactly what we want our kids to learn from our education leaders. You really are teaching our kids, even by these presentations tonight, how it is to be resilient and strong and collaborative and all of the great things we try to impart on our students to become the best citizens they can be. And this is yet another example of our team doing that. And Brian put it perfectly that this is the dream team. We have, on the one hand, Dr. Evans and Lori Kirby and Ellen Woodmore, who are taking care of a lot of the logistics and operations and some of the insane amount of planning that goes into reopening during a pandemic. And then we have this team, you know, led by Dr. Ellen Emma, who is being creative and thinking more broadly and very, very much thinking about the future where our kids, when they're adults, what kind of environment they're going to live in. And I think they're going to be able to adapt and really carry us through. And I'm honored to be a part of this in my own small role. And I hope the parents are able to see how much is being done in our district and what an incredible team we have. And I hope that the teachers who are concerned see how much planning is being done, how much support there is for them. And I'm really, really grateful. So thank you to all of you for this.
Thank you, Ms. Marchand. I agree with everything you just said. So other questions, comments from the committee?
I, can I jump in, Brian?
Absolutely, Ms. Burksford.
I noticed that when everybody was speaking, that two things came up consistently, and that was SEL and PBA. And it reminds me back to the two goals that we set last year as a school committee in collaboration with the leadership team to focus on those two things going forward. And it's incredible to see how when everybody works together as a team and with the incredible amount of collaboration that you have, how that just permeates the whole district and the curriculum throughout the district. And what a powerful thing it is to see K through 12 educators using similar language and similar goals and moving together as a unit. And I'm just so impressed with the level of not only interest and skill and organization that that takes, but to really see what happens, what can happen in a district when we move forward in that way together. And when Dr. Ellen Emma is famous for saying silver linings and that have come out of all the experiences that we've had over the last year. And I think that being able to focus on those two things perhaps has been a silver lining for us and for all of you to be able to move forward with that. I thank you so much for all the work that you're doing. As Ms. Marchand said, I hope that it also, hearing from you and what's going on helps parents to understand just the incredible amount of work that's going into preparing for this school year. And I'd like to give Dr. Ellen Emma a minute to actually respond to something. There's been a lot of confusion, I think, about the 50% standards. And I think some of our teachers did a nice job of explaining that. And I think it comes from two things, because I think that parents are afraid that students aren't going to get enough. And teachers throughout the district might be afraid that there's going to be too much expected of them. So, Dr. Ellen Emma, can you just sort of speak to that and clear up any confusion about the 50% standards that have come out of DSE?
Sure. So I think one of the things that we are most agreed upon, regardless of, you know, as we've said many times, right? In everyone's roles, in everyone trying to act in the best interest from whatever perspective or role people have in the district. You know, we hear people from one end of the continuum to the others saying, you know, more, 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 and less, less, less. And so I think our role as the educators is to hear all of the feedback, to hear what parents are saying. And our teachers are with our students all of the time. We have teachers with our students still this summer. People are still running Zooms for their students that need to connect and be in touch. And truthfully, although every stakeholder and voice matters, at the end of the day, they are our customers and they're who we are here for. So in our best educational perspective, we are constantly working to ensure that we're not choosing one extreme or the other. The most important thing we can do is to make sure we're consistent so that as we move past this pandemic year, and hopefully this will be the end of it, that we are all in a place that we can best serve our students going forward in future years. Because all of their skills build on one another. So as a district, we have committed to prioritizing our standards and saying, yes, what are the most essential 50% of our standards? So that we make sure every student has mastered those skills and is ready for next year, regardless of whatever happens during this year. Nobody knows what this year will bring. So we have prioritized them. So we have three colors. We have green, yellow, red, which go back to what I said at the beginning of our essential, which are our green, our important, which are our yellow, and our red, which are the nice to know. And that comes from all the research and curriculum work behind Wiggins and McTae and what they, what every district should focus on when they're thinking about what students should know and be able to do. So we are identifying our most essential standards. So that is where the 50% comes from, to say, what are the things that are most essential? As we go through this year and we start to see what actually unfolds with both time platforms, what students are with us, what teachers are able to be with us, we will constantly assess and reassess our curriculum. Never before have the words "living curriculum" meant as much as they will this year. We will constantly adjust. So as you see, we have a very strong and adept team to guide each of their areas as we go forward with what do we have to do more of? What can we let go of? What do we need to do deeper? What are the students getting and not getting? The SEL is perhaps at the moment our most important goal because not only about building relationships and with our students, but as we move into this year, we all know that emotions impact how much we can learn and what we can do. Brain research tells us that. Every bit of qualitative research tells us that. So as we go through this year, we will need to adjust academic standards based on where our students are emotionally. And we will continue to remain flexible and adjusting to both challenge them, but also make sure that we are not rushing or pushing academics at the expense of emotional well-being and what their needs are as humans.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I give you the chance to respond to one other thing as well?
Sure.
I heard from a lot of the educators here, I heard both whether I'm in person with my kids or remotely. Can you speak to a minute about how we're preparing both for in-person and remote instruction and our ability to do both at one time?
Sure. So obviously, based on our hybrid schedule, there are some courses, areas, et cetera, that are scheduled to be remote regardless. And there are some courses that will be a hybrid of both in-person and remote. And then added to that layer is, of course, for our families that choose full remote, those students will experience all of their learning in that way, which will also mean, as part of the domino effect of scheduling, some of our teachers will be remote. And so as we've been working on curriculum, when we're talking about our essential questions, our enduring understandings, our prioritized standards, regardless of what model we're in, and even if we all have to go remote sometime due to the virus, all of those things remain consistent and standard across the district. And then that's with the professional development. And then, as you've heard from lots of the departments, specific areas that they're exploring and tools and apps, to be able to get to those pieces remotely for some people who will be remote all year and some people who will do both pieces. So it's a little bit like when you build a curriculum based off of open source versus a textbook. So when you're working with other districts, you want to build open source so that if a district doesn't have that same textbook or can't afford the textbooks, everyone can still work within that curriculum. I think a little bit about our curriculum work now is kind of open source. Regardless of what model or platform you're in, we're all able to draw from those pieces.
Thank you. And thank you and to all the educators, the amount of work you're doing to try to make this year the very best year for our kids.
Yeah. Thank you. I can't say enough about, we could have had these ideas, but it wouldn't have gone anywhere if people weren't involved in building it. So it's really been the teachers doing it.
Thank you very much. Are there additional questions or comments from the committee?
Ryan, may I chime in?
Absolutely. Mr. Nixon?
So first, I just want to acknowledge, you know, one of the opening lines in public comment tonight was really challenging school committee to find a way for us to meet in person again soon. And I want to be quick to acknowledge, I look forward to doing that. I miss actually being across the table from my colleagues and from Dr. Evans and the administrative team. I miss that rapport and I miss that chemistry at the table. But I like to think I'm a half-full and not a half-empty guy. And on evenings like this, I'm really thankful for Zoom because for the parents that are on this call, and I think we have about 200 participants. I know many of you are teachers. I know many of you personally. And I understand how important this evening is for you. There's never been a time in my 12 years where we've had so many participants and presenters on the subject, representing the various departments in the Winchester Public Schools. And we've certainly never had this many parents show up at our presentation. So for those of you who are maybe elementary parents, you got a glimpse tonight of the professionalism that you'll find when you get to a call and you get to the high school. There are a few themes, I wrote three pages of it tonight, that I just want to go back and touch on. Again, very positive themes. When Carolyn Plaskowski says she sees more collaboration than ever before, it's sort of what I would expect, but I'm glad to hear that and I'm heartened by it. And I think that that comes sincerely tonight, based on the feedback that I've heard. When Sandy Minugian says 25 of 28 team members participated, Sandy, that's just tremendous. I mean, I really didn't know what you were going to share. I just thought that was fantastic. And I remind the parents listening tonight, teachers, directors, they get a summer vacation too. So everything we saw tonight reflects a tremendous amount of effort on everyone's part. And you've got families that also want you to share your time. So I appreciate that very much. I think Anna, you really hit it. Anna Trony hit it on the head. She talked about how unifying this process has been. So I'm encouraged by that as well. And I don't like to, I don't want to call her out to embarrass her, but when Catherine Dwyer says she's looking to promote hands-on learning, just given incredible success that we saw from her in the spring on like two weeks' notice, I really can't wait to see what she has planned now that she's had a whole summer to think about it. I can't tell you how many elementary kids went into their backyard with spades in their hands and scissors to cut blossoms after watching one of her videos. So Ms. Dwyer has really made her backyard a classroom and by extension, the classroom of every elementary kid who got to participate in her science classes. So I really appreciate all her effort and there are many more just like her. I suppose I just want to come back and my closing thought is the one that Jen Ellen Emma started off with. And it's actually something she had shared with us at this time and other summers when she talks about professional development, which is what is the most important thing for our students to know and to be able to do? And why are these skills and practices important? And I believe that not just school districts, but many institutions are reflecting on this right now. And I'm confident that when we do come out of this, what we will have learned is not just applicable for the here and now. I'm confident and hopeful it's going to make us a stronger district when we get on the backside of this curve and we talk about COVID in a history lesson. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nixon. Ms. Bollniers?
Thank you very much. I just wanted to say thank you as well very to all the teachers who have joined us on this Zoom conference and who have also been working so hard, so tirelessly behind the scenes and throughout the summer and throughout this whole experience with moving our, with moving the district forward with the curriculum and our students' education. I really appreciated hearing how each of you described how you've incorporated social emotional learning and the performance-based assessments and also the aspect of social justice into how you're developing your courses and your curriculum this year. Throughout the grade levels, and I think as Ms. Marchand had expressed, just the consistency across all of these different levels. It's really impressive to see. And I just really appreciate how you've highlighted the different areas that you've been working so hard on. And I also, and I guess in closing, I just really appreciated how Ms. Costello was describing how music can be a source of freedom and comfort and relaxation, joy and escape. I really appreciate all of your efforts. So thank you very much for pushing us forward in everything that you do.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bollniers. I would like to tag on to something that Mr. Nixon said when he mentioned the 25 out of 28 math professionals who were part of the professional development. I also noticed 80% of our social studies teachers were involved. It sounds to me, and I, you know, you may not have the numbers at hand, like the vast majority of our educators were involved in professional development this summer. And that may always be what's happening every summer. But I think this summer is the one that we have a lot more eyes on us. And I'm thrilled to see how many people were truly rolling up their sleeves and getting involved and echoing what everybody else said. Thank you. Our students, thank you. Our parents, thank you. And we thank you for the work you've done for the continuing education of our children. I don't know what more to do than say thank you. Dr. Evans, do you have anything that you'd like to comment on? Or should I turn it back over to Dr. Ellen Emma for closing remarks?
Sure. I mean, Jen can jump in if she has anything to say. In what has probably been the most difficult and challenging six months of my career, Jen's, you know, slight attitude and sharing the amazing things that have been happening on PD and curriculum work has really kept us, our spirits tied in a time when things have not so much fun. And I am so inspired by these teachers and leaders who've, you know, given up their evening on a summer to come and talk about how enthusiastic they are about our students, about the subjects that they are working with. But really, it's about the heart and soul of the young people and how we can help them grow to be productive adults. And that just is woven throughout everyone's work in such a way that's so gratifying. And I know that our families are deeply grateful and that this pandemic can really be very divisive, as can be our political framework, as Chris Karhayt reminded us. But I think the unifying force of our commitment to our students is something that keeps our spirits high and keeps us working. I think the unifying force of our commitment to our students is something that keeps our spirits high and keeps us working hard every day. So I'm confident That whatever happens this fall, our students will have a great experience because our teachers have Put in thousands of hours of work to plan and prepare. And they're committed to learning whatever they need to learn to get the job done. Despite, you know, their own concerns about their own health and their own families. They're ready to step forward and do whatever it takes to help our students. And You know, it's our job to make sure that there's Physically protected and safe. And that our students are well throughout this whole process. So I know that I'm looking forward to seeing some of you in action either in person or on Zooms in just a few weeks. And I know that our students can't wait to get back. Six months apart is just a long time. And so Can't wait to see those faces. Can't wait to see you all. And I just want to express my deep gratitude to each of you for your many, many contributions. Jen, is there anything else you wanted to say?
No, I echo those same sentiments. And I just say, you know, thank you. When we started on this journey, You know, I had no idea how inspiring it would be for all of us to be part of it. So Humbled and grateful to work with everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. And of course, you're all welcome to stay in our meeting. Everyone will give me a few moments. I will Be returning all of our educators back to attendees, but I hope you will be able to stay and continue to hear us if you're interested. So Good night, all of you guys. And just take me a moment. I think that was successful. Somehow we can manage to make Zoom continue to work, which always is sort of a miracle. I'm, I'm glad it works Well as it does. With that, Dr. Evans, we will be moving on to the return to school update. And I will turn it over to you. And I don't know if you are prepared to share screen or if you would like me to go ahead. I think you should be able to if you so desire.
Okay, I'd, I'd like to talk about return to school. It's not As much fun as what Dr. Ellen Emma got to share with you, but I think there are some really key Pieces to our return plan that I need to highlight for you tonight. And I'm going to be happy to take any questions. I do want to remind you that all of the other central office administrators, Including Pam Gerard, who didn't speak much tonight yet, but certainly can answer questions about special education. Ellen can jump in and correct me If I've misspoke in about numbers of devices or other provisions that she has been responsible for acquiring And making sure are in place. And I'll stop periodically to take questions from the committee if that's okay. Because some of this is a bit of a reminder and some of it's new information. So I think it's important to remind ourselves as The curriculum and professional document report showed tonight that there are driving forces or Values behind all of the decisions we make in our schools. Our return to school plan is really focused on five essential elements, the health and safety of our students, families and staff members. And we make tremendous efforts in this regard as we're preparing for the return to school To ensure that we listen to the health experts, the medical experts, the scientists, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education advice on many elements of opening. If anyone is interested in any of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education advice or other resources, just click on the COVID-19 button on our, the front page of our website, winchesterps.org. And it'll take you to Many, many hundreds of pages of resources In relation to the guidelines that we've been following. And as you heard tonight, the teachers are preparing to meet the students' social emotional wellness needs. There are a lot of Experts who say that Students will have experienced trauma when they've been away from us for six months. Away from school, away from their friends. That in many instances are at-risk students have experienced even greater Challenges while they've been apart from us. And so one of the things that I talked about last time was And within, it's in our plan to do some assessments for students and Their social emotional state of mind as we start the year and as we continue and monitor it and respond to it. We also have been developing with medical professionals with our COVID-19 planning and implementation team and a couple of other new teams that we established. Our ability to respond to illness when it arises. As one of the parents pointed out tonight, the rate of positive cases in town has been extremely low for several months. And we hope that it continues to be very low. But when there is a positive case, We need to implement effective contact tracing and quarantine requirements. There's a very extensive nursing and health plan that was recently added to our, our website. And I think that'll help give everybody more specifics on that. Our capacity to support challenging and engaging student learning has been highlighted tonight many times by a variety of teachers and directors and coordinators. I think that the work we've been doing to prioritize standards Doesn't mean that students are only going to learn 50% of what they would learn. I'd suggest they're going to go deeper. They're going to focus on the most important standards. And it will give us an opportunity to ensure equitable access to those standards across the district. And finally, support for our at-risk students. And about a quarter of our students qualify To be placed into this group of at-risk students, either because they have a disability, they're English learners, They have food insecurity or others of mental health needs. And so we have a number of at-risk students. We need to provide appropriate support for them. School has come with many challenges and I don't share these because it has Enabled me to make excuses for the things that haven't Gone well into in terms of our planning, but really people need to understand the reality of What we are up against. We're not just At the foot of the Himalayas. You know, we're, we're not even to the Himalayas. There are big mountains ahead to Make sure that we do Meet our students and families' needs this year. And a lot of those come from Inadequate or late or missing supports that should be coming from our state level. The metrics that we need to use to Determine whether we should open or close schools, Return to full in-person learning have come to us very late. And I think they're incomplete. Our ability to look at local cases and work with our Department of Public Health is strong. But there's no formula. And I've looked at formulas from at least a dozen states. Everyone is different. Everyone looks at different metrics. There's no one universal national model of metrics that would really help us make decisions about these things. The medical and scientific advice is constantly evolving. The experts do not agree with one another on this novel virus In terms of how we should respond to it, understand it and manage it. We are learning more as more and more students across the world are returning to school. Particularly how it affects students and schools. But it's something that is challenging and constantly evolving. The guidance from the state has been extremely light and it places immense pressures on us. Time pressures To develop two schedules for both a hybrid and a full remote With the same staff with very limited resources. And the guidance on the additional provisions is coming late. At 5:29, I got an email today that released information about athletics. While we were in another school committee executive session to talk about contract. So I haven't even had a chance to read it and digest it. And I'm sure there'll be 50 questions about it on my email when I finish this meeting. So the, the lack of Timely decision-making on the state has been extremely challenging. And the last thing I'm going to talk about is really some of this is Self-imposed, I think, in our efforts to be as flexible as possible for parents and families to make a decision between the two And hybrid models. I think we've backed ourselves into a very difficult staffing and scheduling dilemma. That's going to require us to be a little bit firmer on having people make decisions. And finally, we have limited additional financial resources from the federal government in terms of, in the form of a grant That will only enable us to fund A portion of what our increased needs are. And so I'm not going to talk much about budget tonight, but you're going to see that We have purchased and will purchase A lot of equipment, supplies and, and other Expensive, quite expensive to the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars for most of the things that we're purchasing. And some of that will be funded by the grant, but some of it will have to find in our regular budget. And so the inadequate financial resources At the very time when people have very high expectations for us to do more with less Is one of the major challenges of this whole process. So we do have help. We have The district COVID-19 planning and implementation team that has 26 members meets regularly about weekly. We've created a small group of medical professionals, I think eight medical professionals, Other folks in town, physicians, nurse practitioners, some scientists Who are going to meet this Thursday night, the first time advisory capacity To look at things like metrics, to look at things like testing, Availability of testing, what kinds of tests, Funding for tests, those sorts of things. And also look at the latest research as it, as it comes out every day. We have school COVID-19 planning and implementation teams at each school Made up of parents and teachers and administrators that are working hard on building-based logistics. Ellen chairs a district wide health and safety committee with representatives from each of the seven buildings and also public health and nursing and DPW. We have teams that we work with that are town DPW central office teams. We have a weekly meeting with the town manager and DPW. We have incident management teams at each school and district wide. I met recently with the chiefs and Teachers and counselors who serve on the district incident management team. So we have a lot of People meeting sometimes at the same time On complementary issues related to school return. So there are lots of Opportunities for many minds to come together to make So right now, we are Looking at a number of planning Efforts and initiatives. One is bargaining with our represented groups. That would be our four unions. There are changes in working conditions that come along with a pandemic. And outlining those and being clear about what those are Is really important. I think that our unions have been Extremely collaborative. And our teachers have been extremely patient and waiting for us to Be clear about how we're going to ensure that they are safe, as safe as possible. That we will mitigate the risk to their health. And that we will Ask of them a reasonable effort that's aligned with their professional training. And so the bargaining is in process. You heard about the hundreds of teachers and staff members who worked on curriculum revision and professional development staff training. Our coordination with public health DPW and town officials is ongoing. We speak with the DPW facility manager and his staff members every single day. Ellen Whittamore has the mon speed dial. It's a collaborative effort. And finally, the planning for at-risk students, particularly Students with disabilities falls on Pam Gerard shoulder and the, and the special education supervisors and the principals. I know Pam has a spreadsheet with every single one of the 850 students with IEPs. Plus, we're looking at students with 504 plans to ensure that their services get coordinated and are provided regardless of Whether the student's got a hybrid or a remote option. So at the district level, one of the major focus areas has been supply planning. I'm going to talk, I'm going to do a couple slides there and I'll pause and you can take questions from committee members. So we've talked a number of times about personal protective equipment like masks, gloves, gowns, face shields, Plexiglass dividers. We purchase those for teachers, students and support staff. And it really, the needs vary by school because the buildings look different. But we have invested in Large quantities of all of these things. We also have invested in paper towels, tissues, cleaner and hand sanitizer stations. There are wall units and freestanding hand sanitizer stations or hand wash stations. That have been ordered and will be installed or have been installed in some cases. So we want to make sure that if we're going to say wash your hands, That we make it easy to do that. And teachers will have all of the things that they need in the classroom to ensure that their students are safe. We're doing an HVAC study. The town did it first for all the town buildings, an engineering firm. The consultant did the, looked at the town systems to be sure that the Air quality indicators were met and that anything that needed attention in any of the systems was taken care of. So we're expecting within the next week or two, a draft of that study. And really, we hope that it will just confirm what we already know is that our air exchange systems are operating as designed. That our filter changes to the highest potential filter that works with that system Has been accomplished. And that we've thought ahead to any areas where we might need additional purification. We've purchased 50 desktop and 50 standalone, pretty significant Investment in air purifiers. And we'll be dispersing those as recommended. And also identifying any spaces that are currently being used by individuals That may not have windows or may have been Changed from another purpose, that all of those spaces have adequate fresh air. And so, so this is one of the things that we're doing on the, on the district level to be sure that people are safe. Ellen has also purchased or is in the process of purchasing Dividers that are foldable, that can be put on lunch tables that will provide an increased level of protection when students have their masks off. They'll be six feet apart. But there also be these Lunch table dividers. And they can be installed and folded up when the tables are folded up. We've purchased, I think it's 14 or 15 shade tents.
It's 14.
14. Some are 20 by 20 or 20 by 30. That'll allow students to go outside for mass breaks. And if the weather's a little lemon, they can stand under them or if it's too Sunny, they can stand under them. And it just gives us another safe place for students to be outside. Portable hand washing stations. Ellen, do we purchase 60 of those?
60 total for, for the district at this time.
Right. So several will go in each school depending on their needs. Some schools have classroom sinks for hand washing, others don't. And so we're going to deploy those where they make the most sense. And then the DPW purchased some air cooling units for known hotspots that we have Because we're concerned that in the shoulder season, some of our, some floors at some schools, because we lack air conditioning in most of our schools can be pretty hot. So I'm going to stop there. And if anybody has any questions on any of this sort of District level supply planning efforts, school committee members, I'd be glad to take those. And Ellen can jump in as well.
Are there any questions from the committee? Ms. Bollniers.
Sorry, unmute. I just have a quick one, Dr. Evans. So you had mentioned that we're not going to get too deep into financial resources tonight, but that there was a COVID grant to the schools To help us fund some of this. Is there any money that has come into the town through COVID that could help us fund any of these things as well?
So Ellen can jump in on this as well. There are two sources of funding On the town side that the school department could take advantage of in some circumstances. Both are sort of reimbursement grants. The first is FEMA. So FEMA has allowed the town to put in reimbursement for some of the PPE Or other things that public safety has purchased or the town hall has purchased. That's a smaller, I think, reimbursement. The town, I think, has about a $2 million grant to be used to offset COVID-related expenses. So there's a potential that we could work with the town to ask them to reimburse us for some of these Purchases. But the total amount that we're spending, The school department also has a CARES grant that can, that must be spent, I think by the end of the year, Ellen?
By December 31st, yes.
31st. So expenses that we incur After December 31st, we don't have unidentified funds worth if we expend that CARES grant, which is about, what is it, 1.2 million?
Uh, no, it's 1,056,000. Uh no, it's a one million fifty-six thousand.
One million fifty-six thousand. Um Ellen and I met recently members from the finance committee, and one of the things that um we never like to do is go to the finance committee and ask for more money. But the state aid that came in for chapter seventy specifically was significantly higher than what had been budgeted. Also, local government uh aid was also significantly higher. So the town manager has been um very accommodating to say, if you expend all of your funds and you need to come to us, you know, we'll we'll certainly try to help you out. Um but when you see the dollar amount just to get us through the first quarter of the year, it's pretty staggering. This doesn't include any additional staff. This is just stuff.
Right. The money, the CARES grant that came into the town was the intent that from the state that some of that would be able to be used by the schools?
So what, that's unclear to me what their intent was. I, uh when I speak with other local superintendents, most of them are um sharing in that allocation to fund school-related expenses.
Thanks.
Sure.
Are there additional questions from the committee?
Okay.
Dr. Dr. Evans, I had a question that occurred to me as you were doing, giving your presentation, that you mentioned that some of the rooms have no windows or are hot. Do we imagine that we might uh uh it's an honest question, vacate some of those rooms if we have some remote classes? And so the classrooms that they have no windows or are the hottest classes might be, um the classroom that we have go remote and uh if one class is remote, and therefore we don't need to be air conditioning some of the spaces, or is that too simplistic a a question?
So um the um it's hard to know whether we'll have any days that are, you know, high heat index days in September and October. Um so planning ahead for those classrooms that might be affected and trying to move folks around. I mean, I think every principal knows, and I did it as a teacher. There are some days where you're on the third floor and it's just unbearably hot and you have to go to an alternate location outside or some other location in the school that's not being used at that time. The problem is that we want to keep cohorts together and not move kids around too much. And so we have to be very planful, which is why these additional air cooling units, if they are effective, DPW has said that they will purchase some more. One of the things that's always in the back of my mind for anything that gets plugged in, even these portable hand washing stations are electric. The um air purifiers that we purchased are electric. And so some of our schools have limited capacity to plug anything else in without blowing a fuse essentially. Um and um I know we, at Parkhurst, if somebody plugs too many things in, the place goes dark. And so it's not, it's not a fun uh you know, that's not a fun thing you have to deal with when you have students. Obviously, you have emergency lights and so forth. So I don't think it's really going to happen with any of the things that we've purchased, but we just have to be careful. These air cooling units, if they if they drew a lot of power, Pete Watson has been great. He knows exactly what not to buy to trip the system, but we we have limited capacity. But we do move students around. We generally don't have stu- students in classrooms that don't have opening windows. But there might be, say, a, I don't know, a school psychologist or a counselor who's in an individual office that wasn't uh designed with a with a window. And so some, in some instances, it's not a problem because you have good air exchange and a modern air exchange system in that space, and sometimes it's not. So we might move more individual people around and less moving students around.
Thank you, Dr. Evans.
Can I just make a point? So since we're on the subject of resources, I wanted to just take a moment to to circle back at a a comment that was made at a previous school committee meeting, I think by Ms. Inferna, and it had to do with resources. I think I responded to it at that meeting, but I probably didn't take enough time to talk about the impact when we talk about per pupil spending. To the extent there are parents even today who are wondering, well, uh district X is doing this, district Y is doing this, district D, why aren't we doing that? Um at a previous meeting, it was shared with us what Weston, Brookline, and Bill Ricker may be doing in those three instances. And I think my, I said later at the time, if we could only enjoy their levels of per pupil spending. We work very hard in this district with the finance committee and the town manager, and certainly Dr. Evans does on behalf of her whole team to fight for additional funding every year in Winchester to meet our critical needs. And so each year, we try to grow the numerator, if you will, which is our operating budget. And what we really can't control is that growing denominator, which is just that in migration that continues. A lot of families love to come to Winchester and raise families here. And so what we struggle to keep up with is that enrollment growth. I I think I shared with the committee at a recent meeting that Bill Ricker spends over twenty-four hundred dollars more per pupil than we do in Winchester. And at the high end, Weston spends over eleven thousand dollars more per pupil. But to put it in maybe more bottom-line terms, I just wanted to share with the committee and those parents listening tonight what that means. If we could enjoy Bill Ricker's level of funding per pupil, Dr. Evans would have ten and a half million more dollars to be working with right now. If we had Brookline's level of funding, we'd have twenty-two point seven million more dollars to be working with right now. And if we were in the stratosphere like what, like Weston is, um we'd have over forty-eight million more dollars to be working with. So I just, I want to commend uh the effort that that Dr. Evans and her team is making, but just sort of recognize um how difficult the challenge is because our per pupil spending uh really is not as rich as I think some people uh have the impression that it is. So it's a real challenge moving forward. And my point, I think, to my peers on the school committee, is terribly important as we move forward to keep our eyes on the budget, to be looking at encumbered expenses with Dr. Evans and Ms. Whittmore. Um so we we don't find ourselves in a difficult position before the operating uh budget runs out at the end of the year.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon.
Any other committee questions before I move on? So at the school level, uh the COVID nineteen planning and implementation teams, and especially the principals, who've been fantastic, are uh developing plans to limit student contact with one another as much as is practical. So they're looking at exit and entry procedures to uh have students come in a variety of doors or to leave classrooms and move to the next classroom in a staggered fashion, et cetera. Uh cleaning and disinfection, disinfection processes. Um and so DPW is doing daily cleaning for um touch points multiple times per day, uh daily cleaning of classrooms and deep cleaning on Wednesdays and Saturdays after each uh of the cohorts of students um passes through. Uh there are a lot of logistics around food service. Um Ellen has been working with the food service vendor, Whittson's, um to develop um strategies so students don't even have to touch a tou- touchpad, that they can swipe with a card um in order to purchase um grab-and-go lunches. Those are not just cold lunches, those are hot lunches as well. We also work with community partners to be sure that for remote students who receive free reduced lunch, that those get delivered. Um and so there's a lot of logistics involved in the food service. Um we also have training scheduled for all personnel before students return, so we'll do a lot of safety and health protocol training um to be sure that we have um proper um mask dawning and doffing procedures, um storage procedures, um movement from one place to another procedures, what to do if a student is showing symptoms, what what is an isolation room mean, what is the procedure if a teacher gets sick, et cetera. So we have, we have our our building-based procedures in plan. The um continuing efforts and next steps involve the COVID nineteen teams and the health and safety teams actively planning. We have um distributed and collated selection forums uh for all students to plan remote and hybrid sections and staffing. We've got about forty-five hundred of those returned. We're still waiting for another few hundred, but most of them are in. If um uh if it has not been uh submitted, we're assuming that the student is going to be hybrid and staffing accordingly. But I'm gonna talk at the end of this presentation about why it's so important to get accurate counts on that. We have specific parent and community forums. I did meet with uh via Zoom with each of the seven school uh parent and community uh members and also separately each of the seven school staffs. Um but the principals are going to do school-specific parent-community forums in the next two weeks, so stay tuned to hear about that. We're also looking at a lot of physical changes to move furniture around and configure classrooms and large group spaces for the hybrid model in preparation for students returning in a few weeks. So before I talk about transportation, any questions on this?
Questions from the committee? See none.
Okay.
I I just would, I was gonna ask, I think Ms. Marchant asked this question in an earlier meeting, just for those um stragglers that haven't come in yet to indicate full remote or hybrid, are we sort of running down if there are language barriers or communication difficulties with families? Um I know, Dr. Evans, you've indicated some families just aren't here, but um we hope they're in contact one way or the other. Just what, can you just sort of describe, when you say a few hundred, how many hundred and sort of what effort are we making to really run it to ground?
Um so uh I don't have identi- I don't have identified which families have not returned. I only have a gross number of of how many have been returned. But there are some families who who've submitted four or five times. And so I had to go through by hand today and delete the duplicates and look at the most recent timestamp, and it's pretty labor-intensive. So maybe Jen, Ellen, Emma could speak to the efforts of the EL team to reach out to families who um need translation or need additional supports.
Sure. So um I think that, you know, once we have, because we haven't had a set date that, and I know Judy's gonna talk about that after, about when, you know, things are due, we just haven't felt like um it's a finalized list to then figure out which families we haven't heard from and reached out to. But pretty regularly, um IRL teachers in particular, um you know, we've still been running virtual our ELL virtual camps, um and they're in touch with their students that way. Um also, you know, they're, they know they need regular translations. And um a lot of, you know, as our new families come in, um they're doing assessments over the summer. So they're also making connections with even our brand-new families and helping them navigate as they get started. So once we have a quote-unquote finalized list, we can determine who we haven't heard from and then make sure that we're reaching out.
Um, Dr. Evans, similarly, I know that the PAC held a session for parents of students with special needs. And I know that many of them indicated that they were waiting until they were able to get in touch with their special education supervisor before they would be able to make some decisions. Can Pam speak to the progress on that?
Pam Gerard, can you um, can you talk about where we are in terms of providing services for students with disabilities?
Very similar to what you and um Jen have said, Michelle. We've got, you know, we're going through the list of the responses. Um there's been a number of duplicate responses, and so what's happening right now is we're vetting the lists and we are responding to queries and emails from parents um as they come in and also working and trying to get in touch with parents as we know kind of how things are starting to solidify for some of the program students um so that we can start to um roll out, I don't want to say schedules, but schedules as we know them in terms of what we anticipate, um a schedule will look like, so parents can start to plan.
Wait, and that'll happen in the next week or so?
That's our hope. Um it, we've got to get this data. Uh you know, people have to respond to the best that they possibly can, and we've got a kind of um I don't want to say we need to close the survey down, but we have to close the survey down and then potentially cull this data and then start it over again, because the ever-shifting data is just impossible to figure out kind of what, with accuracy, what our needs are. And that as it plays out, looks at both the scheduling and the staffing. It has huge implications on both how we we develop a schedule and how it, how we staff to support gen ed and uh special education EL um right across the board.
Yeah. So um in terms of transportation, I've really been um putting a lot of thought into transportation. And as you know, the guidance on transportation came fairly late from the state, and it really severely limits the number of um riders we can safely transport on a bus. Um and there are lots of restrictions, including assigned seating, seating, staggered seating, you know, in in each row, except if you're with a sibling. Uh masks, uh san- hand sanitizer before you board the bus, cleaning after the students are off of us. Lots of logistics around transportation that make it more complex. When we did the return selection, about ten percent of the parents who um responded said that they were planning to use the bus this year. Um and as you know, as I've shared in previous meetings, we we would need additional bus runs because of the restriction on student riders. And at the same time, uh it it increases our cost when we are bringing in less revenue. So it's a significant um budget uh concern. Um but really, my main concern is not so much the budgeting or how many bus runs we'll have to add. We have a great relationship with our bus company, and we should be able to manage that bit. What I am concerned about is um trying to open busing and schools at the same time and being able to contact trace if there is a case of illness, whether it was on a bus with all the other students on the bus, whether it's in a classroom, or whether it's a community spread. Um and what was suggested to me, uh why school committee member was, we might consider staggering the start or phasing the start of bus transportation just to see how the logistics are working with the classrooms first for a few weeks before we fully implement busing. So I wanted committee feedback on a plan to phase in the return-to-school bus transportation. We have to, we have to transport students who are more than two miles from school who are K to sixth. So it's mainly McCall students. Um that will give us an opportunity for those students to put into practice with fewer buses our protocols and procedures and see, sort of troubleshoot that. We also have to transport hundreds of special education students, but that's a different bus company, a different um process. Um I'd like to propose that we just um start with our mandated busing and then three or four weeks later, perhaps on October twelfth, start our, if it's a fall as well, which I anticipate it will be, um beginning our regular bus routes. And that will give us time to monitor any spread of illness, refine our bus protocols with your students. Um uh my only hesitation is that um this could be a hardship for some families. Um I know there'll only be transporting students two days, but I know that there are some families who heavily rely on our transportation. Um and I know it'd be a hardship to ask them to transport for a couple of weeks or three weeks while we uh kind of monitor how well we're managing the bus runs that we are doing. So any feedback or questions on that? And Ellen, please feel free to jump in. You're the one who's been dealing with um our bus company and and um know the logistics on that end.
So I have spoken to um John Devine, the um owner of North Suburban. I speak to him probably at least once a week. Um and he has been very agreeable and accommodating um in every conversation I've had with him. And I did have a conversation uh with him earlier today that this, um that it was a probability that um we would be looking to um begin the school year with uh with the mandated, and he and I will have another conversation later in the week um regarding how all the logistics of everything will work out. But um to to his credit, he he ended the call with, we'll figure it out, we'll work together. So um having uh that type of a partnership with our bus company has been extremely comforting to me, um especially with everything that's going on. Um but I I agree with um with Dr. Evans that um DESI guidance um was on the light side of coming out regarding transportation and that um providing the mandated uh transportation to um what essentially is the majority will be, um if not all, it'll be McCall students, will give us the opportunity to really look at the bus protocols, see how it all works, and then have the opportunity um to go through and refine the protocols um as needed and just see how it all works. And um so I'm definitely uh think that this is probably a very good idea in regards to transportation.
Can I ask a question, Brian?
Ms. Marchant.
Um I I don't know if we've seen the data before. Forgive me, my brain is a little scrambled right now. But do we know how many ma- how many students would be mandated to be transported? And how, how many buses that would translate to the number?
So it translates to, based upon our ridership for this year, um it was, I'm sorry, for the nineteen-twenty school year, it was about sixty-ish, um based upon the um transportation guidance from DESI that equates to about three buses now, because you can only have about twenty-five students on a bus. Um so depending, yeah, yeah. So depending on, you know, where students are going, on what days, things like that. You know, th- those are the things that I have to look at. Um but, you know, certainly we'll be able to make it work and um, you know, and come up with solid bus routes, um you know, and to make sure that we are not exceeding the, you know, the DESI guy- guidance regarding um number of students on buses.
Additional questions from the committee, Ms. Polonius?
Oh, um I was just wondering if you had a sense, Dr. Evans and Ms. Whitmore, um for how many s- or how many students of the four hundred uh families were like from elementary school or from middle school or for high school? No?
I haven't, I haven't dug into the um bus data yet, no. All I have is sort of the um of the families who entered the survey, what percentage indicated that they would be looking for bus.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Nixon, do you have a question?
Well, I, a comment, but I just want to teed up with a question to you, Mr. Chairman. Since we, we joined the Board of Health last week at their meeting, this was something, got a little bit of discussion. Are you comfortable sharing some of the feedback we got at the Board of Health on, on the issue of transportation? Or is that something you'd like me to give an elevator speech on?
I would be delighted if you gave an elevator speech on it. Because I, I'll be honest, I think there were, there was no firm statements made at the meeting, but there were certainly suggestions. And that means a public meeting, so I'd be happy if you wanted to give your impressions of the meeting.
So I, I'm not a statistician. The, the Chair of the Board of Health described this as a, I think she used the expression confounding factor. And acknowledged that this may be something that, that the idea of postponing a little bit may have merit. Just to, you know, confirm that our, our operating model, the hybrid model is sound and so forth. But, but also members in that body and the Director of the Board of Health also recognize that for some families, transportation is really important. But I think they, they welcome kind of revisiting this and asking some tough questions. So I, I like this suggestion. I am someone who's kind of been beating this drum for a while. I've had some concern about infection spread associated with transportation. And I don't think I did a good enough job at the previous meeting just acknowledging that although our elementary buses really are dedicated to just one. Many years ago, I think Morocco and Lynch shared a bus at one point. But Ms. Whitmore, I think that is the case today, right? We have a dedicated elementary bus for each school.
That is correct. We don't have any elementary buses that share.
Okay, and so however, at McCall and at the high school, we do still share buses. So a concern I've had for a while is if we should have an incident, incidents where we have a COVID infection in a student at the middle school, but we do not at the high school. And then that student happens to get on a bus with high school students, there's the risk for spread. So that's just sort of a general concern of mine, because we're kind of mixing, mixing two schools just beyond mixing cohorts. But I, I did have a thought about this, that this is something the committee supports. I, I do, and I think that October 12th date seems really reasonable to me. Although there are students who live beyond that two mile limit that we have that obligation to bus, what I'm really unclear on is how many families in fact opt in for that, because for many families, that there is a more convenient option. And of course, with everything turned on its head, so many people working from home, whatever families we're falling on, falling back on traditionally over the past three, three years, just may be very different now. So I think the sooner we make a decision on this, the better, because then Ms. Whitmore can reach out to those families. Ellen, I assume you know who they are. And, and can share information like this and share dates like October 12th and just get a sense, are you interested in a bus ride or not?
Correct.
Any additional, so do you have a comment, Dr. Evans?
Nope, ready to move on if there's.
So I had, I had a comment and a question. The comment was that transportation fees will be something that we'll be talking about next week, because obviously these all tie together again. And so I just wanted to point that out, that next week at our meeting, that will be a, an action item to potentially come up with a fee. So that will be tied into, obviously, how we choose to go about doing the transportation. My question is, I know, I've heard that there might be changes with our, potentially changes in town with after school programs. But beyond that, so if we wait until October 12th for after school transportation, transportation to after school programs, Kids Corner, Win Rec, Chinese School, I, I don't know if it's a question or a comment, that I think we need to be aware of the impact that has, because if those families are counting on transportation to an after school program, and they don't have that, we either, I just think it's something we need to be aware of and to plan ahead for. And see if potentially there's space in some of the building based programs for some of these families, if that were to become a reality. So I just want, just want us to keep it on our radar. One of the 700 things I want to keep on the radar.
Can I make it 699 and tell you that one of those programs you just mentioned have totally turned the model on its head and they will not require busing this year? And they have instructed parents not to request bus passes?
So, so Mr. Nixon, I, I, I will confess, I was aware of that. But I know at the same building, there are people who might, at the exact same location, there's another program that I'm not aware of what their model is at the moment, so.
If I may, so Kids Corner is, will not be running an after school program. They have completely, as Mr. Nixon said, turned their model on, on its head. The Win Rec program is going to be running a program. However, it's going to, smaller than it historically has been just due to numbers and cohorts. And then as far as the Chinese school, that's something that we're still working to ascertain if they are in fact going to be running anything after school. And then the other program that we, we had been bringing a small number of students to is not running. So we will be continuing to reach out to the Chinese school to determine what they are actually, to get concrete plans from them. The after school programs that are site based in our elementary schools will continue to run. Win Rec will have its program over at, at Lynch. And then all of the kids for our programs will run as usual in our buildings.
Thank you. I would encourage us to consider, as we cut down to, if we were to cut down to only mandated busing, to at least consider busing, to at least consider it on the table, busing to after school programs in the interest of that some of these families may have nowhere else to go for their kids. So I just wanted to leave that there.
Understood.
Ms. Bergstrom, do you have a question?
Thing real quick, I agree with what you just said, Brian. I was concerned about that as well. And I appreciate Mr. Nixon's thoughts about mixing cohorts with the middle and high school kids. So I can see the value in holding off till October 12th. I guess I'd want a sense, though, for how many of these 400 families would not get their kids to or from school? Because we are going to a lot of expense, a lot of scheduling and a lot of effort to try to get kids in school only two days a week. And if this is going to prevent 400 more of our families from getting their kids to school, I, I think I would want to reevaluate that risk. So I don't know if there's any way to quantify that, Dr. Evans, how many people are using this out of convenience? And how many of them would actually not be able to get their kids to school? Because I would hate to force 400 families to choose a model that might not be their preference, because they couldn't get their kids out of the house.
Understood.
Thank you, Ms. Bergstrom. I see no further questions.
Thank you. A couple of other challenges that we're still working on, technology. Our return forums indicated that we would continue to provide district Chromebooks for families who are in need or hotspots for families who need. More suggested they wanted them than we actually have available. We have some back ordered, so working on that. And then the other remaining challenge is athletics. And I only had about 30 seconds in between the two meetings to peruse athletics, but it looks like we will have some fall sports. So that would be fantastic news for many of our students and families. And so more to come on that. And we have another meeting coming up and I'll share on that.
Can I just make one, one quick comment here, Mr. Sherman?
Yes, Mr. Nixon.
So, Dr. Evans, thank you for forwarding that. I, I scanned it too, right before the meeting. And there's a lot of information there, but in particular, there is a date at which athletics are cleared to begin. And they make reference to the white, yellow, green map that we keep talking about tonight, and what sports are encouraged and which ones are discouraged. But transportation, of course, is a big part of athletics, both in making it happen and also on the expense side. So my, my one request would be if you could circle back with our Athletic Director and have that conversation, once you get a chance to look at that list. Do we, given the, given your, your thinking on perhaps postponing the start of yellow buses for school, is there similar thinking on athletics? And, and should that kind of frame when we start? And when we actually start interscholastic competition as opposed to practices, you know, at schools? I'm just saying there's a, another dimension to athletics. This memo the state just released naturally will not surprise you, says nothing about athletics transportation, because you're supposed to figure that out.
Of course. Yep, well, Ellen saw it.
I read that.
Next is our.
Dr. Evans, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Ms. Markshop.
Is there, can you give us a number, maybe not today, but can we get a number on the, the number of Chromebooks that are back ordered versus how many parents are requesting them? Because I know we might be able to ask for some back because it was an unknown situation last year. And now more parents probably are able to give back some of those Chromebooks. If we asked if there are any volunteers, I know of at least two Chromebooks that could come back. So do you have a, a number in mind of what's?
Yeah, Jen. Yeah, I can jump in here. So actually, the way that it was asked on the survey may have been somewhat confusing to parents. So we've reached back out to the families to try to ascertain how many we need. So by the next time we meet, we'll have much firmer numbers around those cases.
Okay, thank you, Jen.
Thank you both.
Okay, so the next decision we need to make as a district and as a town is what are the metrics we're going to use that will trigger a movement from hybrid to full remote to eventually full in person? And I think one of the parents today pointed out that, like many other communities across the Commonwealth, we're in the white, unshaded, fewer than five total cases over the last 14 days. In fact, over the last couple of months, the towns and cities in those categories are encouraged to have full time in person education, if you're, if you're able to meet the criteria to do that, which we're not because of space and staffing. But eventually, I am hopeful that sometime this year, we'll be able to transition back to full in person. But if not, that we'll be able to remain hybrid for as long as possible. What would trigger, trigger full remote would not just be average daily cases greater than eight, but another metric or two that I think we need to nail down more specifically so that everyone knows what the standards are that should be cause for alarm and what should not be cause for alarm in terms of keeping our schools open. But the reality is that the decision on a daily, day to day basis about whether we're closing a classroom or a school will be made in consultation with Public Health Department based on a number of indicators that will tell us whether it's safe to open schools or whether we need to close a classroom for a quarantine or for a deep clean. It depends on a lot of variables. How many students are involved? What is our capacity to contact trace? What are the trends telling us? Is it in one classroom only? Is it district wide? Is it growing? Is it decreasing? So I think it'll be important for us to set very clear metrics to consider. As Brian mentioned, he and I think Chris Nixon were able to attend a Board of Health public posted meeting. We also had a small group discussion with some folks from Public Health. We'll continue to have those discussions. I'm going to ask the medical advisory panel of the COVID-19 Planning and Implementation Team to tackle this as well from epidemiological and medical perspective. So my proposal, after looking at lots of other metrics chosen by other states and other towns, is that we not only look at the information that will come up each week from the Department of Public Health at the state level for Winchester, which will tell us what our trends are in a number of different indicators, but mainly where we are red, yellow, green or white from a weekly basis. But also that we look on a weekly, at two weeks or every three weeks rate for positive test result trends. Are they increasing or are they decreasing in the community versus the previous period in the schools? Which schools? What multiple metric trends do we see over time? Are we having more positive cases or fewer positive cases? Are we seeing more serious illness or more asymptomatic illness? Are we seeing more students or more teachers? Are we seeing more community spread but no school spread? That's why it's important to work closely with Public Health. They have the information that we don't have. And we want to share information freely according to the overall, it's been established. We also look at are our cases isolated in a school or classroom? Or are they spreading more widely? What we need to do to shut it down? A lot of that is going to be connected to two things. Contact tracing, how efficient and effective can we be with contact tracing? How quickly can we determine how many students are involved? And the other issue is staffing. If we have several staff members who are quarantined because they've been exposed to a positive student, at some point, it's unsafe to keep the school open, because you're missing too many adults. And so I think some of the decisions are going to have to be made on a day to day basis and not weekly. The trend information, we look at weekly. The daily count is identifying every positive case that we know of in our school community and in our wider town community. So we still are formulating kind of a decision tree around some of these metrics to see which ones are more important and more useful. And I will continue to look at other metrics across the country. What I would say is the average daily cases dominated by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts are significantly lower than they are in many other states for community spread. I've seen it as high as 30 to be in the red for 100,000. And so I've seen not many that have fewer than this list. So this, I think, is a pretty conservative standard compared to many I've seen. There are also other metrics that other states look at in terms of intensive care unit capacity, you know, beds and hospitals available, et cetera, is kind of a community indicator. And other sort of readiness indicators for surge. And I think what we're interested in is quickly and easily and effectively identifying what our actual numbers are and making decisions based on that for Winchester students and Winchester teachers and Winchester families. And so that's where I am on the metrics, continuing to work with that, continuing to have a couple of groups work on it. But I think we have a good handle on the things that will at least trigger us to close a school or the district and move to full remote for some period of time. So I'm happy to answer any questions or suggestions that you might have.
Questions from the committee, Mr. Nixon?
Could I ask you, Dr. Evans, or to the Chair? Because the amended plan that we voted a meeting or two ago also spoke about having some conversations to look at a demographic area. In other words, it could be Winchester or Winchester plus or Winchester plus plus. Could you or Mr. Vinalia just take a moment to describe to the committee that we've begun to have those conversations with the Board of Health and some of the thinking around why really looking, looking more at Winchester is sort of where, where they're leaning, but sort of the thought process behind that?
Dr. Evans, I'll let you answer that if you.
Sure, I think, I think there are endless variations in what you can consider as your, in your trend analysis. And so are we focusing mainly on cases of illness, positive test results in our own town? Or are we taking into consideration those rates in adjoining towns or the towns in which our staff members live? And we had some fairly lengthy conversations with Public Health about this. I think the inclination is to focus on our town itself and not the trend analysis, partially because we control our own data and have a much better sense for what our cases are well in advance of what the state is showing. And partially because there are towns in the red who are two or three towns away from us, with whom we don't have a lot of interaction. And the Public Health folks point out that we live in a mobile society and our students and teachers all travel widely, even with the quarantine bans in place. And so it's more, it's, it's not so much what the rates are in the places they've traveled, but it's more about what are the trends that we're seeing in positive cases? So I don't think there's a clear answer that says that there's any one approach that works better. Certainly statewide data is not going to tell us as much as our own town data.
I would echo what Dr. Evans said from that meeting. We looked at schools, like would you want to look at just the schoolwide data? Would you want to look at a townwide plus the teachers? I mean, you really can slice this up a number of ways. And, and you can make it as complicated as you want. But the question is, does that add anything to the metrics and to the thresholds that we have? If we make it more complicated and less complicated? And I, I think the consensus of that, that. And I think the consensus of that working group that we had was some of these other metrics to consider might be the direction to go while retaining that sort of townwide metric of the white, green, yellow, red, and sort of not reinventing that wheel, but looking at those other metrics and working with them. So that's sort of what I got out of that meeting as well. But we will continue to have those meetings to try to make sure that we're all on the same page. Ms. Bergstrom?
Just real quick, I know that since that metric has come out, I think it's important to note that things are quick and ever-changing, that when the DESI first came out with it, there were only six towns in the red. And by the time they came out with it again the next week, there were 11 towns that were red. So I hope we don't lose sight of the fact that we are part of a larger community as well and that, you know, paying attention to what happens across Middlesex County, where our teachers and staff do come from over, I think it's something like Dr. Evans, what is it, 90 towns in three states besides Winchester? That they may be coming from some of these areas, and it's not just the Winchester rates today, but where we could be tomorrow. So I just want to make sure that we don't become so centric on our own town that we lose sight of the bigger picture either.
Thank you, Ms. Bergstrom.
Can I just add quickly to that point, Mr. Vinalia, that so just as Dr. Evans is frequently reaching out to her peer superintendents in other communities, one thing has struck me from our meeting with the Board of Health, Ms. Bergstrom, is just how frequently our Public Health Director, Jen Murphy, is also in contact with her peers. So on a whole host of subjects. So I felt a little better that although we may wind up kind of just looking at oh, one, eight, nine, oh, but slicing it in a more granular way, that our public health officials kind of have the bigger picture, which is reassuring to me.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon, Ms. Bergstrom, Dr. Evans.
Moving along, I think we could spend all night talking about the protocol for what happens if a student or a teacher gets sick. I just would like to refer people to the Nursing Health and Safety Plan that's been posted on our COVID-19 website. It's very detailed. It has some links in it, including health checks, daily health checks, what happens when someone gets sick, how do we handle an isolation room, et cetera. And so if you have questions, I'd like you to check that. And then I'd be happy to take questions next time from the school committee, but you can take the next hour talking about protocols, if that's okay. Any general questions before I move on?
Seeing none, Dr. Evans?
All right, so now we come down to making the choice between hybrid and full remote for students to return to our schools safely. And so I think most of the questions that I'm getting from parents about this choice really are involved in determining which academic experience would be preferable for their students. The intent really from the state in allowing for a full remote option initially was to provide for those students who had medical needs or had some health risks. And now it's morphed into another sort of academic offering that's open to anyone. And so that's what the school committee voted. That's what we're planning for. It's extremely challenging to staff and plan for this. And it's become increasingly clear to me that we have to just make sure we're very transparent about the differences and the strengths and challenges of each model. Each model has strengths and challenges. So the difference in class size, what we're aiming to do is to have at the K-5 level to meet the school committee class size guidelines, which max out at 24 or so in the upper grade levels, slightly lower in the lower grade levels. But really, the hybrid model is limited in the cohort size, the AA or VB cohort, by the size of the class. And so we're taking a traditional 18 to 24 class, and we're breaking it into two sections. But in some cases, it could be eight because this room is fairly small, and to keep kids six feet apart, it needs to be small. So there's an advantage to having small in-person classes in terms of teacher individual attention. There are advantages to having more students to interact with on a daily basis for full remote. So that's, you know, one is not necessarily better than another, but that is the difference. There is concern also, because when the state announced that they recognized that teachers couldn't be two places at once, that they would have a very robust distance learning offering that schools could purchase to pay tuition for individual students to participate. There was concern that if a parent or family chose full remote over hybrid, that that would mean somehow they wouldn't get a Winchester public school teacher. Or there was concern that we'd have a lot of teachers out on leave and we'd be hiring substitute teachers. Well, we hire a lot of leave-of-absence replacements every year for teachers who are out for a variety of reasons. And this year is not significantly different than any other year. Most of the K-5 students, whether it's full remote or hybrid, will be taught by Winchester public schools' teachers. The difference is that there aren't enough students at a grade level in any elementary school to make a full remote class. So all of the full remote classes will be mixed and won't be associated with any individual school. They will be fully remote, district-wide, hybrid classes with kids from several elementary schools. They're not school-based. It's the only way we can do it. There aren't enough to do with any other way from any individual school.
Dr. Evans, just to clarify, you said hybrid classes. I think you meant hybrid, not in the same sense of the word hybrid here. I just wanted to clarify that in case anybody was listening. You said they would be district-wide hybrid classes?
Right, district-wide remote classes taught by Winchester public schools' teachers, students mixed by schools, sorry. The academics in both models are taught by core teachers. The academics are loaded onto the two in-person days because those are the most important skills that our students need to have in literacy and numeracy and social studies and science. Those are taught by the core classroom teachers in person, supplemented by some additional lessons from the district-wide people that you heard from Catherine Dwyer in science and Julie McLean-Gorman in math on the at-home days. The special subject teachers, art, music, PE, library are all taught remotely in both groups, full remote and the hybrid. And so there's not an expectation that the core curriculum is going to be any different in the hybrid or the full remote, that the instructional goals are going to be the same, that the teachers who are the full remote teachers will work on the Wednesday collaboration time with other full remote teachers to ensure that students are on the same page, that their schedules look fairly similar, and that they are addressing the same content and skills as the hybrid teachers. Questions on the K-5 differences between the two models?
Questions? Ms. Bollinger? You're still muted, Ms. Bollinger.
Sorry about that. Dr. Evans, could you just elaborate on how the hybrid, how a hybrid class might look at the elementary school level, just for example, within the limitations of like having your desks facing forward or with having the smaller classes? So will you just be able to move around and work with the students?
Yes, although the primary instruction is going to be more front of the room than it ever is in a traditional elementary classroom. But there'll certainly be opportunity for teachers to work with individual students. And also, what we're trying to do is arrange the furniture so that students aren't always just sitting at a desk, but that they are standing sometimes or they're moving around their desks. There'll be lots of sort of mask breaks and more outdoor time than we typically have so that students can get their masks off outside safely and get some running around in. And I think in general, when you only have half the students there, you can approach class differently in terms of some of your instructional strategies. Typically, in an elementary classroom, students work in collaborative groups for a large portion of the day. Sorry, crazy dog here. Students work in collaborative groups for a large portion of the day. And it is more difficult in this scenario to manage the student learning that way because the students can't sit so close to each other. So we've got to find some ways for students to interact with one another and have conversations without being so close to one another. In some cases, you can use plexiglass dividers. So for example, in the preschool, we're purchasing some plexiglass dividers that you can put on the floor and have students on either side sort of parallel playing so they're not breathing the same air. They're separated, but they're near each other and can talk to each other and hear each other. So we're trying to, we're trying to address the changes in how classrooms need to work, you know, as best we can. I think the teachers are working hard to try to plan that way. And 70% of the districts in the Commonwealth are using a hybrid approach. So we'll learn from our peers in other districts about what works well too.
And how about, I guess, just continuing on, how about at the middle school and high school level?
So it's going to be similar. I'm going to talk about those models in just a minute.
True.
So, but in general, the DESI guidelines say that students should be sitting in assigned seats. They say three feet apart. We're going to have them six feet apart, all facing the same direction for their primary instruction. And again, you know, I think if you see pictures all around the world, this is what it looks like in the classrooms all around the world, and they're figuring it out. And it's not ideal. I hope it's only a matter of months that we have to do this and not a full year. But what we're trying to do is build in fun and engaging ways to reach students so that they're not just sitting there at a desk all day. So moving on to the middle school, hybrid versus full remote at the middle school. So middle schools are on, students are on teams. The middle school classrooms can fit 10 to 12 per cohort. The remote classes, we aim for, you know, 20 to 24. In some cases, they can go up to 30 and have always gone up to 30 in some middle school classes. And so the full remote classes will be of the typical size that we have when we don't have remote classes. We'll primarily have Winchester public school teachers again. They will be school-based teams. We could be mixing some teams on the full remote, depending on how many students select this option. Middle and high school percentages are smaller than at some of our elementary schools in terms of the percentage of students who've selected remote. Academics will be taught by the team teachers on in-person days, the two days, the AA and the VB. The same content is used in both hybrid and full remote. And the electives and world languages are taught on the at-home day for the hybrid. But they will also be taught on the same schedule for the full remote. What drives the schedule at the middle school is that you will have some teachers who are teaching some hybrid classes and some full remote classes. A few are full remote teachers. You may have some, certainly the specialists, you will have them who are teaching full remote and hybrid in the same day, the same thing at the high school. And so this kind of dictates what the schedule looks like. So at the middle school, students will be moving from classroom to classroom, but only in their team classrooms, which are adjacent or across from each other. And they're not going to any of their electives or world language classes. Those are all remote. And so they'll be moving around. They'll go outside for mask breaks. They'll go to lunch. But they will not move across the school to elective classrooms because those are all remote on the at-home days. Questions?
Questions for Dr. Evans?
High school. We're limited by the size of the class in terms of how many in-person students can fit. We expect 10 to 15, but probably closer to 12 or 13 in most high school classrooms. Full remote might be more like our typical class size of 22 to 30. Mostly Winchester public school teachers in both models, except if we don't have enough students electing a certain course or class to be a full remote section. In that case, we might steer some of those students to college online or other courses, like calling some local districts and saying, are you offering AP physics remotely? And we have a student who needs it, but we don't have a remote section. This is the most challenging schedule to make. They have to hand-schedule every single student and figure out which teachers are going to teach it, and then collapse other sections and reassign the students to other teachers. So it is an enormous undertaking. The academics are taught by the team teachers on the in-person days. It's a very rigorous schedule. It comes a little bit later, but they are going from academic to academic to academic to academic. We place a priority on having students in person with their teachers for two full days. And then the Wednesday is full remote. And then Thursday and Friday for the students who are of the B group. They're in person. The AA group is at home, taking their two other classes and also doing some independent work assigned by the core classroom teachers. Question, Karen?
Bollinger? You're still muted.
I'm sorry. I was just wondering if you could just clarify for our audience what the hand-scheduling the high school students is?
So typically, we have scheduling software to take the 1,450 students, each of whom asks for seven plus classes, you know, depending on if they have alternative options if they can't get into their first choice. And then the software will sort the students into groups. And then the groups will be assigned teachers and rooms. And there's a lot of sort of manipulating some of that because, you know, you've got variables like how many students do you need who can fit in this one class? What if it's only a single option and it conflicts with another single option? Putting the courses where they most fit. All of that has to be thrown out the window at very short notice now. And we are hand-scheduling essentially 1,450 kids. Of the students who are electing full remote, we have to determine what courses they need and whether we can change any current hybrid courses into remote courses in order to assign teachers. Because we're not adding 18% more teachers or 15% more teachers who are exactly the right teachers for those full remote students. We're taking existing teachers and compressing some classrooms that are hybrid and making some of those remote. And it's a big puzzle, and not everybody's going to get what they want. Questions?
Questions from the committee?
Okay, so that's the difference between the hybrid and the full remote. What do they both include? I think it's important to focus on the positive. By definition, over the course of the week, they have similar levels of daily student-teacher contact. But they really are driven by the hybrid schedule because we have so many teachers, especially six through 12. We're going to be teaching both. We are going to take attendance at every scheduled session, whether remote or in-person. There'll be traditional grades and accountability. Students will be expected to attend class and learn and will be assessed and will be graded. We'll be providing social-emotional support for students. Counselors will do that. K-12 teachers, as you heard tonight, will do that embedded in their lessons. We're looking for similar levels of grade-level content and skill development in both the hybrid and full remote option as we are prepared to move between the two models regularly throughout the year, depending on the course of the illness. And there are a group of students, we're calling them the A group and the B group, are two hybrid students. The C group is our full remote students. The D group is our at-risk students. Those students will be in attendance for three or four days of the week so that we can provide additional services, generally either English learner services or special education services or reading services. So we have, we really are dealing with four groups here, even though I'm showing you two options. So the selection form summary, just to let you know where we stand. The hybrid and remote choices astonishingly vary significantly by elementary school. So at Ambrose, 13% of the parents chose, families chose, remote for their students. 15% at Lincoln. But at Lynch and Morocco, 34%, much higher numbers. At VO, 19%, more akin to Ambrose and Lincoln. Do I know why this is? I have no idea. And so, and I don't know whether any of these percentages will change if people are forced to make a final choice and will change that choice. At the six through eight level, about 20% selected full remote and 80% selected hybrid. At the high schools, 16% selected full remote, 84% selected the hybrid. We received about 4,500 forms. And so, you know, a pretty good percentage of the families. District-wide, the percentages have hardly changed since the first 100 surveys came in. We've been consistently 20 to 30% remote and 70 to 80% hybrid. We cannot give up schedules or assign teachers until we've got firmer numbers on choice. So families will learn of their class and teacher assignments as soon as possible, but it might be early September. So here's where I've come to at this point. I think that I sent mixed signals about a common... I think that I sent mixed signals about accommodating individual families, not recognizing that so many families are really torn and so many have changed back and forth, four or five times in their choice. I'd like to be, I'd like to believe that most of those families are making that choice because they are concerned for their children's health. And that they're, they're concerned that if the rates, community rates rise to a level where they're not comfortable, yet we're still in session, they would like to go to full remote. The problem is that there are some significant consequences to moving that limit our flexibility in doing so. So what I'm going to ask is that families make final choices by a week from today. Because this will allow us some time to assign the staff and sections. I will consider individual requests to switch, but it may not be possible to do it right away. For the following reason. We're taking what are generally a hundred and ten sections of elementary classrooms and we're moving twenty-two to twenty-seven of them to full remote. That means that there'll be fewer in-person sections and they might not be as steep. I can only allow a certain number of students in each classroom because of physical space limitations for social distancing. So students who wish to switch to remote or hybrid before the end of the marking period may have to fill a spot that's not in their home school, especially at the elementary level. And they'll have to change teachers, which I think is pretty disruptive. So if parents tell me they want to move and there's not sufficient space, and if enough people move, then I need to hire additional staff. That takes a little while to do. So we're asking for people to wait to move until the end of the first trimester or semester, depending on whether you're elementary, middle, or high school.
Dr. Evans, can I just stop you and can you tell people when that is? Because most people don't know that. Like, what is that?
So the first semester is January. And the trimester is a third of the way through, I don't know, is it like November? Somewhere, somewhere there. I don't have the middle school trimester, but there, it's a third of the school year.
And that's elementary and middle would be trimester and high school would be semester.
Right, so maybe December first or something like that, or, or the end of Thanksgiving would be the first time. But we would have to have enough notice and we have to have spaces or hire staff members. I think what parents don't realize, and it's not their fault, I probably haven't been clear about this, is when you're trying to meet two completely different models with the same staff, it's just incredibly complex. And then putting in the mix the additional services that some of our students, that twenty percent of our students get for special education or English learner services or reading or counseling, to which they're entitled and they need, that makes it even more complicated to switch. And so some of those special services drive the bigger model because that's the way it has to work. And if we get a firm sense where people want to be by next Tuesday, it'll allow us enough time to assign staff and sections and then let people know who their teachers are and start the school year. If I wait much longer, we're really going to be scrambling. And I can't guarantee that if students pop up and want remote later on, that I'll have sections available for them to match their course selections.
Dr. Evans, can I ask a clarifying question? You talked about the date of eight twenty-five. Are you asking if a family has filled out their selection form and is satisfied with how they filled it out? Are you asking anything more of them or are they just going to continue on as they are?
So if their parents have not submitted a selection form, we're going to assign the child to a hybrid classroom because that's our, that's eighty percent of our students, unless they tell us otherwise. The only people who need to submit a new form, and I'll send something out to parents if I have your support on this, will be people who change their mind from the original form or who want to go remote. Otherwise, everyone, they'll be placed in hybrid.
Dr. Evans, could I, could I request that we, that you consider moving the date by just one day to allow us to have one more school committee meeting before parents have to make a final decision?
Can you, can you talk more about why that's, why that would be helpful?
I think that I have heard from some members of the community that they would like to hear more information on the HVAC and ventilation report that you had indicated would be coming later this month. I think that people would like just perhaps a bit more time to understand some of the state metrics and be able to understand the data coming out on the state and COVID as some of the colleges come back in session. And while Mr. Nixon and Mr. Rinalia have met with the Board of Health, I had thought we had agreed as a school committee, we were going to meet with the Board of Health as part of the plan. So there are a number of things that we had indicated that we might do before parents had to make a final decision. And I was just trying to give them, it's only moving it by one day. And I was just trying to give people just one more school committee meeting in case there were any other unanswered questions out there that we could satisfy for people.
I mean, I can make it eight twenty-six, that's, you know, it's, that's not a problem for me. I just don't want to set the expectation. We've already set the agenda for next week's school committee meeting. I don't want to set the expectation that there's going to be a lot of additional information coming out between now and next week.
I don't either, but I just wanted to give people just one more public meeting, since we have one scheduled for the twenty-fifth. Just getting them till the twenty-sixth after that last public meeting might just give people a little more, put some of the people who are in decisive ease.
Yeah, my, my hope is that when I send this out tomorrow, that we'll toggle the majority of people who just haven't told us or who are on the fence and that they won't wait until a week from now.
I would hope so as well, but I know there, there may be some new guidance that's coming out, you know. Even like as you, as you mentioned today, even as we speak, some new guidance has come out. So like I said, I, I'm, I'm not asking you to wait another week, just one more day because.
Yeah, it's not the extra day, I think it's just, I don't want to set the false expectation that there's going to be a lot of useful information between now and then, that's all.
Yeah.
Can I, can I, Ms. Bergstrom, if I could just follow up, we have invited the Chair of the Board of Health and the Director of the Health Department. But as, as we mentioned at the last meeting when we made that amendment, we are not inviting the Board of Health. It's not a joint meeting, it will be the, I just wanted to make sure that was clear for anybody watching at home. Mr. Nixon?
So I, I, I want to just indicate my support of Ms. Bergstrom's request. And I just want to share with the committee that as we've just been talking on this slide, I've gotten two text messages from Winchester High School athletes who separately asked me if someone opts for remote learning, can they still play sports? So I just went and looked at the state guidance that Dr. Evans just sent out. And not surprisingly, it doesn't answer the question. So it, it basically says that, you know, districts who are red must postpone their season. And districts that are unshaded or green or yellow that choose to go remote, well, then you must do this, this, or this. But Winchester is a little different. As Dr. Evans said, we're presenting two models, right? So we're offering hybrid and remote. So this, here, two athletes have just asked me in a school committee meeting, if I choose to go remote at Winchester High School, can I still play a sport? I don't have that answer, I don't think Dr. Evans has that answer. But, but I think just giving ourselves that one extra day, Dr. Evans, might, might give you an opportunity with Mark or Rhea to kind of digest this late-breaking information and, and get the clarification that you need to answer those kinds of questions.
Sure.
Dr. Evans, in, in response to Mr. Nixon, I'd also like to ask if people have questions or comments. Well, it's helpful to email us. It's also extraordinarily helpful to email the superintendent on those sort of questions. Because we're not always looking at our texts in the meeting, but I know she is checking all of her emails, as are we. So just want to point out that if you have questions, a good way is to send Dr. Evans and she can get a response back to you. Ms. Marchand?
I was actually going to go a different route than Michelle and Chris. And I was going to ask to shorten the timeline because I want, excuse me. I want us to get to the point where we're pushing family questions and family nuances down to our principals and their teachers. And the sooner we can get these assignments established, the sooner that the questions are going to get answered fully, accurately, and relevantly to these families. I mean, if I know, I already know that I'm, I'm hybrid and I know that I'm a Lynch parent. So now I know that I can go to Bathroly. Next, I want to know who my teacher is so that we can get going on the logistics of my children's schedule. So I would, I would ask to go the opposite and not, not continue making this a school committee issue, but rather a building, building, sorry, building specific. So I, I, I see it as being more important to get these decisions made now so we can get going and parents will get more accurate, more relevant, more complete information.
And if we were only talking about an in-person model, I would totally agree with you that that's where they would get their information would be at a building-based level if you're a hybrid parent. But if you're considering remote, there may be some bigger issues beyond just your building that you may still be considering.
Right, but those are things that have to be assigned. If I am going full remote as an elementary parent, I need to know who my children are going to be assigned to. I can't know that until the decision is made. So we're creating a longer extended timeline when if we would just get the answer, we can assign and move forward. And I think that's the better approach.
Can I, can I make a suggestion, Mr. Chairman? We may be hung up a little in semantics. I'm not sure Ms. Bergstrom was suggesting that the superintendent wait until that day to open up the responses, but just give an extra day. So I think for the many families who feel confident that they're going to be hybrid or going to be remote, they can say so. But for those families that need some additional information, even the two students who just asked me about athletics. I mean, that, I get it, that's an interesting question. And if they're thinking they're going remote and sports is important, they need an answer. But I, I would, you know, Ms. Marchand, I would suggest, I don't think that Mr. Mahoney has the answer to that question at the high school either. So it gives us, and it, Dr. Evans said this at the beginning of the meeting. We, we, we have been getting, the information that we get from the state pretty consistently comes much later than we would like it to. And it puts Dr. Evans and our whole team in a difficult spot. So an extra day to try to work through those issues and come up with the best information for families, I think would just be helpful.
Doc, Dr. Evans, can I ask a, not to belabor the point, could you set the deadline to be ten AM on the twenty-sixth? So essentially, somebody who has something they want to see that night. Ten AM, that way you have actually, that you actually, either way you have that day now to start scheduling. But you do give, as Mr. Nixon and Ms. Bergstrom said, you get a chance to attend that meeting and see what's relayed. But you then, it's, you're, that whole day isn't waiting till five PM to get responses in. Just to, you know, slice the baby, so to speak.
Yeah, yeah. I, I appreciate everyone's, everyone's wise counsel on this. I mean, I think, I think that I'm trying, I was trying to avoid another school committee meeting where you got a lot of public comment trying to convince you to do four different things. Fully open the schools, fully close the schools. And a whole host of things in between. What I would say is just two students at the high school changing their minds can create twenty hours of work for somebody, just to, like, there's a, the complexities involved in this. Every single time a student changes his mind, it's mind-boggling to me. How many people have to adjust schedules, classes, assignments? And it's, you know, part of it is, we have to have a hard stop on eight twenty-sixth. Because teachers need to know what they're going to teach, they need to start preparing. And families need to know for, for sure that they can't keep switching back and forth, that really we just have to settle on a model. And so I'm hopeful that most people will not make, I, I'm hopeful that we don't have a few hundred people changing their mind at this point. I hope it's just a few people who haven't told us, who want to be remote, who will now be remote. And again, you know, I summarize both models, we're trying to make them as equitable and reasonable in terms of expectations for families and students, that both of them are great choices. But that I don't want to overpromise, we're in a pandemic, neither choice is the one I would have wanted. We're making the best of what is a very difficult situation for everyone with woefully inadequate resources. And so, you know, I, I I have not stopped working for a single day since this, you know, pandemic began. And the principals, many of whom don't even get paid to work in the summer for some weeks, who have weeks of vacation that they've completely not taken, are working night and day on this. And so I, we would ask for the understanding of families, that they try to stick with their original choice if it's possible. Because we started to make plans based on those. They haven't let us know if they're going to be remote and they should let us know as soon as possible. If they must wait until the twenty-sixth, that they, that they do so, but that they get it in as soon as they possibly can, that's my plea.
I like the idea of having a hard stop. I originally was going to say earlier, like after our meeting on the twenty-fifth. But I think ten AM on eight twenty-sixth on August twenty-sixth is fine.
Okay, well, I think that's fine. So that's all I have for, it's, it's not ironic that it goes to black on my screen.
And to be clear, I'm, I'm fully in support of having a firm deadline. I, and I think that parents should also hear you, Dr. Evans, that the sooner they can make a decision, the sooner everything can settle in. But just for, to make sure that we do our due diligence. I, I appreciate the compromise.
Thank you for your feedback.
Thank you very much, Dr. Evans. And clearly, again, a lot of work encapsulated in a, still not that long presentation for considering how much work is encapsulated in that. So I thank you and everyone. I just keep, I, I'm feeling very thankful tonight. Thank you for all you've done and all the teachers are doing. With that, we will move on to the next agenda item, which is the vote to approve the capital planning priority list, which is more than just vote to approve the capital planning, but also to review a memo prepared by Mr. Nixon. I would like to actually kick it off with you, Dr. Evans. And then you and Chris, who is our capital planning committee representative, can talk about things on that list. And then ultimately, to be clear, at the end of this evening, we must come up with a ranked list that we will be presenting to capital tomorrow night. So, Dr. Evans?
Thank you. I had previously presented some suggested rankings for projects that were not new to you. Some of them were carryovers from previous years. We discussed most of these. The list that you have in front of you has now been realphabetized. There's the design for the Ambrose roof replacement, part of a planned, a long planned process. The Lincoln Playfield drainage and site renovation, talk again repeatedly about the challenging issues at the Lincoln Playfields, which are very small and get very muddy and messy and wet. The McCall Masonry Design and Restoration Schematic Design, where the exterior masonry needs some significant work. And we've been planning to do this for several years. These are all a hundred thousand or less in expenses related to these. There are two Morocco additions based on the recent study, the prioritization study that was done by Flansburgh. I'll skip over those for a moment. There's the engineering study for the electrical service and branch wiring upgrade for Parkhurst to prepare it for, to be used as swing space or perhaps to house, temporarily house our preschool program, perhaps as early as next fall. At some point, we can house a preschool program without upgrading the electrical, but at some point, the electrical system at Parkhurst needs to be upgraded. I would say, while I'm on the subject of the preschool at Parkhurst, Ellen and I had a call with the MSBA today in relation to beginning the Lynch School project. And I discussed with them the preschool population being housed at Lynch. Explained to them that historically, the entire preschool program had been at Lynch for many, many years, that we separated two preschool classrooms because we were completely out of space. And was gratified to hear that they were likely to approve the design of the preschool wing at Lynch as part of our reimbursable costs, that they'll build the classrooms at reimbursable cost. And the only thing they will not do is buy the furniture and the equipment to put in it. And so that was really good news. The next step for that, for the Lynch project is to talk about enrollment. But they wanted to confirm that we plan to use that as a K-five facility that in the long term, the preschool remains as part of our planning to be housed at Lynch. And that, that will be part of the project that would be reimbursable except for furniture and equipment. And so that was a gratifying conversation. But Parkhurst will be used for student space with, before any other space is added. But Parkhurst will be used for student space with, before any other space is added. And um, it's in fairly good shape for that. Chris Nixon has understandably been um concerned and getting a lot of questions from the um capital. Planning group around what additional improvements are needed at Parkhurst. In order to house students there next fall. But one of the things that makes a lot of the use of Parkhurst unknown in the next year is related to the pandemic. What, what is our preschool population going to look like next year? What's our enrollment trends going to look like? How many students are we going to have? Um, in our elementary schools? We have not lost a lot of students to private schools because of the pandemic. We are enrolling new students every day. We enrolled seven students in the last three days. And so looking closely at enrollment and whether we will need to use Parkhurst strictly for preschool to. Open up classrooms at Lynch or whether we'll have to house some students from a newly constructed. Housing, uh, large house, large-scale housing development is to be seen. So. Right now, my only recommendation is to include the engineering study and not any additional other capital. Requests related to Parkhurst for this cycle. There was, this was not uh added in the original. This is Vincent Owen um third four expansion. This is not a surprise to anybody. This has been. Something that had been um included in the master plan. What the school committee needs to decide today is do we want to move forward with design and cost estimates? And I will be glad to speak to my feelings about that if I'm asked. And so uh, that's not something that was originally recommended by my office on the capital. Requests. And then district-wide flooring carpet replacement. I think, you know, there's a lot of places where we have old carpet. Some of it needs abatement. It gets to be expensive to replace it. We'd like to do this in a planful way. So a hundred thousand dollars for that. So getting back to Morocco, I'm going to let Chris speak to the two priorities. Both of which are for testing and schematic design. And to enable us a year from now, a year from this next summer. To um, replace the roof uh and. And do some electrical work. So Chris, do you want to speak to the Morocco and the VO additions? I think you're muted, Chris.
Sorry, I didn't realize I was muted. Um, I'm just gonna, I'll refer back to the memo that um, that Frida sent out to you earlier today. It's, it's not too long and I just want to share it for, for those who are watching.
Would you like me to share it for you or?
I'll, you can if you, I mean, if you want to do share screen, you can. Um, and I'll, I'll just read it. As I shared with the committee at our last meeting. The Flansburgh Architectural and Engineering Team has completed its evaluation of the Morocco Elementary School. And has been working on completing its report by the end of August. Although the report is not yet finalized, Flansburgh is categorizing recommendations into four different priorities. With priority one being most urgent and suggested for funding in this capital cycle. So before I continue, I want to pick up on a point Dr. Evans made earlier. The superintendent referred to some evaluation, uh, mechanical evaluation that has been contracted out within the district. Looking at all of our schools, looking at HVAC ventilation systems and so forth. That's not what this is. So the committee is well aware, but for, for parents or teachers watching tonight who may be confused. We did go to Springtown Meeting uh with the Lynch Project now having been um invited at eligibility with the MSBA. We anticipate a new Lynch will come on board in the fall, approximately the fall of twenty twenty-five. And therefore we have no expectation for a new Morocco. Until the fall of twenty twenty-eight at the earliest, and that's still eight years away. So it could be really eight, nine or 10 years before we find Morocco's replacement. And so what the school committee wanted to do was understand uh a little bit better, given that we have a really. Sort of deep and detailed um facilities management database tool. It's the VFA tool. That captures all of the renewal and replacement costs at Morocco. That VFA tool. Is built, let's say, with an assumption that you keep your buildings running into perpetuity. The VFA tool doesn't really know how to process if you decide, well, I need, I need, I need a building, but I only need it for eight or 10 years. That's difficult for the tool to kind of reshuffle and reprioritize. And so what we decided that we really wanted to do is bring an architectural and engineering team into Morocco, literally get boots on the ground. Look at, at the envelope, look at the systems, mechanical, electrical, plumbing. The roof and so forth. And to give us um. A more detailed assessment of the condition of those elements of the building. And to make some recommendations um along maybe four lines of priority. That would help us as we wrap up this capital cycle this summer for fall town meeting. The idea being, what are the things that would be recommended that we really need to make investments in that will. Really meaningfully extend the life of Morocco and continue to provide um excellent spaces for teaching and learning. And for our teachers and staff. And so that's what, that's what was funded by our postponed Springtown Meeting. I think that happened in June. It feels like six months ago. The funding was made available within a couple of weeks. Um, Meg White, working with Ellen Whitmore, got a team on board. They um scoured the building. Completed their evaluation maybe a couple of weeks ago and have been sort of working on compiling a report. The report includes a pretty detailed cost estimate. So that work is ongoing, but with appreciation for our timeline, meaning we're presenting to Capitol tomorrow night. The architectural and engineering team did relay to us what the top priority items are at Morocco. So that's really what I wanted to focus on tonight. So. Having paused to sort of get that out of the way and hope I make the, the distinction between those two studies. With appreciation for that deadline, as I mentioned, uh, what I can share that the, the team's priority one scope is limited. To testing and schematic design for replacement of Morocco's roof and primary electrical switchgear. And that that would be completed by the summer of twenty twenty-one, meaning that the testing and the, the early sort of conceptual design. The, the prison cost for roof testing and schematic design is just under a hundred thousand dollars. And some load testing on the switchgear as well as a S D spec. Or some preliminary schematic design is estimated at around forty-five thousand dollars. So both of those figures include the design money because the way we typically do this with capital. Is that you, you want to have enough of a specification, enough of a schematic design package. That you can get uh an updated and more detailed cost estimate from a professional cost estimator to tell you what it's actually going to take to get the work done. So then we move on to priority two. Because what the team is recommending is you're testing and doing schematic design the summer of twenty-one. And that we would perhaps then if, if we should be still with capital, if this gets, if priority one scope gets funded in the fall town meeting of twenty. That would be summer twenty-one work. Then we're, we would come back to fall town meeting in twenty twenty-one, looking for the money to actually do the work. That is to complete those construction documents. And to replace the roof and to complete the construction documents and actually replace the primary electrical switchgear. And so you see the cost right, right now at a very, at a very sort of conceptual state around two point three to two and a half million on the roof. And for the electrical, it's a little under nine hundred thousand dollars. So those numbers would become clearer, come better into focus if we should be successful with uh schematic design next summer. So those are really the, those are the areas of concern that the team has uh for Morocco. And this is why on the grid that we'll look at in just a moment, the, the two items for Morocco that have been added. Are just the roof testing and schematic design at ninety-eight and change, and then the electrical gear load testing and schematic design at forty-five thousand dollars. But I just wanted to continue for, for those who are interested in this tonight and listening. Priority three and priority four scope continues to be developed and reviewed. And I want to know of parent inquiries that I've received about Morocco's mechanical HVAC systems. Liz West is the principal at Morocco. We had a Zoom meeting with some parents uh on this last week who had some questions and concerns. Uh, the architectural and engineering team feels Morocco's uh systems during good to fair condition. Uh, there is some equipment, especially some of the original piping and valves in the building that are original and they are recommended, recommended for replacement. That'll be in like priority three or priority four once they finish the report. And that will be over the next few years. But many items have been installed or replaced in the past decade and they're not recommended for replacement. What many people may not appreciate, uh, and this came up in the, the Zoom meeting that Principal West and I had with some parents. I think a lot of parents are under the impression Morocco's uh ventilation system is original to the building in nineteen sixty-six. Morocco's ventilation units, in fact, were replaced in twenty-ten as part of a larger mechanical HVAC upgrade. And renovation project. And we also installed the three high-efficiency gas-fired boilers at that time. Although classroom unit cabinets, meaning literally the enclosures are original to the school's construction. Most classrooms now are served with energy recovery ventilators and new Fintube um radiation.